It is one minute past.
Call this meeting order, first on business be going to closed session. Is there a motion?
Second.
Be it resolved Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby entering to close meetings for the purpose of discussion of the following. Discussion concerns a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community. One, 2019-003. Two, be discussed with consideration of interview of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplinary, or reassignment of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, economic development authority. Two, Parks and Rec Commission. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Ms. Wieszkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Beal.
Aye.
Ms. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Cherokee.
Aye.
Ms. Simmons.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Second.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the firm's records vote, and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the boards that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia laws. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certify that to the best each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meetings required by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion made in the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Madam Secretary, you call roll please.
Ms. Wieszkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Beal.
Aye.
Ms. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Cherokee.
Aye.
Ms. Simmons.
This time if we could, let us rise, and we will have our invocation, which is a moment of silence, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Next, the presentation, recognition, and award. First up, the New River Health District.
Good evening, members of board. Thank you very much for giving me some time this evening. I'm Noel Bissel, Director of the New River Health District. I wanted to get with you on two somewhat urgent public health issues that we're addressing right now, just to update you and let you know where we are. Both of them are surrounded by stigma, which is something we're dealing with every day in lots of areas. The first one is sexually transmitted infections. Right now, one in two sexually active young adults will get a sexually transmitted infection before the age of 25. The United States right now leads industrialized nations in sexually transmitted infections in our youth, and it costs this country $16 billion every year. There are nearly 20 million new cases of sexually transmitted diseases every year. I think in this, we're victims of our own success. We've gotten so good at contraception that people aren't reaching for condoms like they used to for birth control, and the only way to prevent a sexually transmitted infection is not having sex or using condoms. Even one unprotected episode, and someone can become infected. The other problem is that people think if they have an infection, they're going to have symptoms, and that's absolutely not true. In most cases, they actually don't have any symptoms, so they're spreading the disease to other partners, and then they're developing long-term complications of chronic disease. These complications include increased risk of other diseases like HIV. They include long-term infertility and sterility. They include miscarriages and stillbirths, as well as ectopic pregnancies. We also have social media to help with all of this. People are hooking up on social media like never before. There are people who are having sex, and they don't even know the first name of the person they're having sex with. They know them by their screen name only. Since 2013, chlamydia is up 27 percent. Gonorrhea is up 67 percent. We now also have an antibiotic-resistant gonorrhea that hasn't hit the New River Valley, but it's coming. With global travel, and with people getting around so easily, it will get here. It's not a matter of if, but when. Syphilis is up 76 percent. And congenital syphilis, where a mother transmits the infection to her unborn child, is up 154 percent. So as we can see, we have a problem, and people who don't think we have a problem, it's that we haven't been looking. So we need to change the narrative. We need to openly address it and discuss it. I hope you've seen some of our efforts. We've had some billboards up. We have some ads on buses. We have digital marketing. We've done radio and TV. And we have our bus that we've been getting out and testing. And our testing is going very well. We're getting out in our communities and offering free confidential testing and free treatment for anyone who wants to get tested. We're getting more and more people, and hopefully, we're spreading the word. So just to give you an update there, I know it's a difficult conversation, but we need to have the conversation. From a public health standpoint, we talk about education prevention. We talk about treatment and harm reduction. And harm reduction is getting the word out there and getting the consequences out there so we can address them. The second issue I want to talk to you tonight is no less stigmatizing, and that's addiction. Until we can address addiction as a disease and not a moral failing, we are not going to be able to come to terms with it anywhere in this country or in the New River Valley. We very much have a problem here in the New River Valley. We are seeing heroin. We are seeing other drugs, including methamphetamine and cocaine. I-81 is a main corridor for transporting drugs up from Mexico. And now that we traditionally had had problems with pills, but pills have become, number one, more expensive, and number two, less available because not as many doctors are prescribing them, people are turning to other drugs. Heroin is cheap and pure. Methamphetamine is cheap and pure, and it's coming straight up I-81. Most people don't start with these drugs. They start with other gateway drugs. Tobacco being the first one that we think about. Vaping has become very, very popular. Another thing that's a big problem with our youth. Somehow, the marketing has been very successful that vaping is harmless. We still don't know how harmful it is, but we do know that it's not harmless. We also know that it's not regulated. One Juul pod, which our kids are carrying around in school with them, has as much nicotine as one pack of cigarettes. So if you have kids doing two, three, and four Juul pods a day, that's akin to smoking three and four packs of cigarettes a day. Nicotine is one of the most addictive substances there is, and we know with addiction, once you turn on those receptors, once you hit those thresholds, that's it. There are genetic components to it. There are environmental components to it, and it is a brain disease. And if we don't look at it that way, we can't treat it that way. So again, from a public health standpoint, we're looking at prevention, including education. We're partnering with our community partners. New River Community Service being a big one, because we know that most people who are using substances are also suffering from mental illness. It's almost impossible to distinguish the two or to separate the two. And mental illness is another stigmatized topic that we need to address. We have peer support counselors through New River Community Services, and they're the ones that can most connect with people who are having this problem. They're not going to listen to me, or somebody who's never been in their shoes, but someone who's walked in their shoes can certainly help get them on the road to recovery. And that person can also let them know that this is not going to be a switch that you flip off, and all of a sudden, you're no longer addicted. This is a disease of relapses and remissions. It takes on average four or five times in recovery before someone can actually sustain long-term recovery. So we're working also on getting peer recovery councils in the emergency departments. When people come to the emergency department and they have attempted or overdosed, getting them connected with that peer recovery counselor, and then getting them referred for treatment within the first 24 to 72 hours is what our goal is. The next thing is treatment. Treatment is mental health counseling. A lot of people require going on medications for anxiety and other mental health problems, but they may also require medication-assisted treatment. I know that's a controversial subject, and people want to think that it's just enabling or allowing people to continue use drugs, but we actually have really good public health data that shows with medication-assisted treatment, people can hold down jobs, they have stable relationships, they can get into housing and not be on the streets, and they have less interactions with law enforcement. To me, that's a win. Some people might be able to come off a medication in the long term. Some people might not. But again, it's no different than you're diabetic or you're asthmatic who needs long-term medication. Again, we have to look at this as a disease and not a moral failing. Our addiction crisis in 2015 cost this country $504 billion. That's 2.7 percent of our gross domestic product. So the next step that we're going to do is harm reduction, and that's meeting people where they are. I hope you've heard about our efforts to get naloxone out in the community. To date, in the New River Health District, we've dispensed over 500 doses of naloxone. We go to community events. We go to schools. We're going to universities. We're going to the rec centers. We're going to churches. Anybody who wants to get trained and get naloxone can do it through the New River Health District. The next part of harm reduction is a little bit more controversial, and that is syringe exchange. Anybody who's on Facebook now, you're going to see pretty much every day something about dirty needles being found in our community. I know we don't want to admit it, but it's there. And as I said, as people can't get heroin or can't get pills, they're turning to heroin, and they're shooting up. The complications of shooting up with dirty needles are tremendous. There's the bloodborne diseases, hepatitis C. The New River Valley has some very high rates of hepatitis C. We're seeing our HIV rates go up. We also have problems with cellulitis and the abscesses that form where they're shooting up. And then we also have endocarditis. To treat someone with hepatitis C is about $60,000 to $70,000. To treat someone lifelong with HIV is in the tens of thousands of dollars. To treat someone who has endocarditis and needs a valve replacement is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And all of this can be prevented if we meet people where they are and give them clean needles and clean syringes until we can get them into treatment and give them the help that they need. So the New River Health District has gotten funding. On May 29th, we will be hosting an event where we have people from communities that are doing this well. Everything about addiction, from medication-assisted treatment to education to harm reduction. It'll be at Cross Point. I wanted to give you that save the date. You'll all be getting invitations, and I would love to have everybody attend so we can start this discussion, because it can be done well, and it can make a meaningful difference in the community. So that's mainly what I wanted to speak about this evening. If anyone had any questions for me about what we're doing or any other statistics, I'm happy to answer them.
Team, we're having questions.
Questions. One, thank you for coming and addressing it. As you may know, I do 75% of my practice is criminal defense work, and I would say I deal with a lot of folks with substance abuse issues and mental health issues. And this board has been trying to fund the drug courts, trying to help out the drug courts to try to address it, but also getting the word out and to address. And we're seeing exactly what you're describing in the criminal justice system, is that people aren't doing the shake-and-bake method of cooking their own meth. It's now all coming out of Mexico or out of Atlanta, and it's crystal, and it's pure. And I've got clients who are telling me that they can buy a pound of meth cheaper than they can buy a pound of pot. So thank you very much.
I want to thank you, number one, for coming here tonight. Number two, for speaking on all of the issues that you hit, because these are primetime issues. These are hot topics. And I've been involved with the New River Community Services Board, because I served there, and I think they're sort of ahead of the game, and I'm glad to see the connection of the two, you know, working together. I think that actually, our community might be a little bit ahead of others, but to your point about the medically assisted treatment, I think there needs to be a lot more discussion so people understand that people can become functioning citizens in our society if they're given the right kind of care and treatment. And this is a big cost. This is a big cost. You look across at all our services, and I'm thinking especially about how it affects our children in this community when they have parents or they're in a situation that involves this kind of thing. And to your point of the sexually transmitted diseases and the vaping, all of these are so important, and we have such a majority of young people with the universities and, you know, with our high schools. So I would be, anything that's educational that you're doing, you know, how we can support you in any way, I don't know, but I really want to commend you for just hitting these points right out there. I mean, these need to be community discussions. We, as a community, are going to have to come together to make any kind of progress on this. We can't just, like, talk about it here and do nothing.
New River Community Services, kind of leading up this month, they're hosting community conversations. And the biggest way to erase stigma is to openly acknowledge and have those conversations. Chris Alderman, and his name is out there, so I'm not speaking about someone who people don't know. He runs the 401 Peer Center, which is part of Community Services in Radford. He is in recovery, and he gives a very compelling presentation as part of those community conversations. And I've been to two of them, and substance users who are active or in recovery themselves have come out to share, because there's that peer connection. Most of these people didn't wake up and say, "I want to be a drug user." Most people started using drugs after legitimate prescription. The thing that really concerns me with our youth are sports injuries, because we're already seeing it. Our youth have sports injuries, and they get pain medication. And each time they get that pain medication, they inch closer to that threshold of addiction. And certain people are genetically predisposed more than others, and we don't know why, but two people can take the same dose for the same period of time, and one person develops addiction and another person doesn't. Our foster care services are overwhelmed because of parents either in jail or dead from substance use. Our kids are getting, I don't know if you've heard of Skittles parties? Our kids are going into medicine cabinets and just taking all the pills and putting them in a big bat, in a big bowl, and just taking handfuls of them and washing them down with alcohol. They don't even know what they're taking. So we also have drug disposal bags that, and we encourage anybody, you can come by the Health Department, if you have old drugs in your medicine cabinet, and I'm guilty of it. I had four C-sections, and I just threw the medications up in my medicine cabinet. These are a safe way to dispose of them, and then they can go right in the trash. They don't go in the water system. They don't end up in our waterways. They don't end up in the wrong cans, and kids can't access them.
And the only other thing I want to add, I think it's so important, what you said about how the addiction changes the brain. I think people, if you really start looking into the research, this is a true phenomenon, and this is what happens up here. And how that is going to be worked with is a big challenge. So thank you for hitting all those points. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Dr. Bissel, thank you as well. Sorry. Sorry.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Starting with the sexually transmitted infections and diseases, what kind of work are you doing with our schools, our public schools, or not doing with our public schools that you would like us to or not do? So we're working with the school health advisory boards on the curriculum. I don't know, Virginia's an abstinence state, so if you look at the Department of Education, the SOLs, abstinence until marriage is basically what they want it to be. We have a good evidence-based curriculum called the three Rs, which is rights, respect, and responsibility. So it is abstinence-based. It talks about, you can't get into trouble if you don't have sex, but we know you're going to start having sex at some point, so when you do, here's how to do it safely. We're also working with Melinda Brick, who is a health educator. She does a teen connections program, which is a wonderful program for middle and high school students. They actually get an incentive if they complete the program. They get a $100 gift card, and very, very positive things come out of that program. I've attended the program with her, and I've attended the graduation. I'll tell you, we went to the Radford Sexual Health Olympics last week, and I would say 95% of those kids don't know how to use condoms. They don't know how to properly use condoms. So the kids need to learn how to do these things and how to be safe. So if we can't do it in our public schools, but there's this program out there, and my son, my younger son, actually went through that program, and I thought it was incredibly informative and helpful, and wish that it was in our schools, but I can understand why it's not in our schools. How can we publicize that more as an alternative? Not all parents are going to want their children to do that, but I would say that if it was publicized enough that parents knew that it was there, the children, the students would give it a chance, at least once or twice, you know, and realize, oh, this is really good. Because that's what my son did. He was like, yeah, this is pretty good, and he brought his buddies with him, and it was a good experience for him. So we're finding that word of mouth has traveled really well. Parent circles, the parents who've been happy with it, word of mouth has traveled. We promote it in all of our clinics, and as you know, minors can seek our services without parental knowledge or permission for contraception in pregnancy, sexually transmitted infections, mental health issues, and substance use. So we promote it with all of our clinic clients. Our resource mothers promote it. Our nurses, when they're out and about, promote it. We do have some good relationships with folks who are associated with our students through rec centers, through other programs. And actually, we actually have some very good faith relationships, and they're promoting it as well. I think people are recognizing that we have to address it. And then on the addiction topic, I really like the idea that you are dispensing the naloxone doses. Could you tell us about how many people would be quote-unquote eligible for that? Meaning, how many hundreds of people or tens of, dozens of people that we're not serving yet in our county would be potentially eligible for that kind of program? Thousands. Thousands. We've dispensed 500 doses, but I would say the population of the New River Health District is about 180,000. So I would say tens to 100,000 or more would be eligible to have it. We want everybody to have it. We want people who use. We want their friends. We want their family, but we want everybody in the community, because it's not unheard of that you'll walk into a restroom at the grocery store and someone will have overdosed. And that is a life-saving. That's a life-saving drug. It has no adverse complications. It can't hurt anybody, so if a child gets a hold of it, it won't hurt them. There are no adverse complications. And if someone has overdosed and stops breathing, in three to five minutes, you have permanent brain damage. So if you walk into a restroom, you don't know how long someone's been there, you can potentially save a life and save brain damage. So we want to get it out there to as many people as we can. Law enforcement carry it. EMS carries it. Everyone in the Health Department's carrying it. Community services, everyone who's going into the homes carry it. Any organization that comes to us and wants to get trained can get trained, and we'll dispense it. And then there's medication in addition to that, because that's, I want to say, acute, you know, medication. But for the people that are addicted, and medication will assist in their treatment, what kind of progress have we made with that, dispensing those types of drugs in our area? So we do have more providers. New River Community Services is one of the providing groups. We do have some primary care physicians who are willing to do it. I'm trying to get more of our younger primary care physicians on board. I think our older primary care physicians just want to get out and really don't want to have to deal with it, because addiction brings out the worst in people. It really does. It brings out the worst. And they're very challenging patients, because withdrawal is the worst flu imaginable, and they will do anything to not go through withdrawal. They will lie. They will cheat. They will steal. They will do anything. So if we can get more of our primary care, people worry that their whole practice will be consumed with it. If we get more people, just having small percentages of their practice, then we can get more people out there treated. So Community Services is doing it. They're doing Suboxone. They also have a special deliveries program, which is for pregnant women or women with small children, and they get them involved in treatment. We have several independent providers who are providing MAT. We have a couple of new ones. And then in Pulaski, we do have a new clinic that is providing Suboxone and Methadone. I understand there are some issues and concerns with it, and we are working with them to try and help, because when it is done right, MAT can be very, very successful. I think our community health center is also looking at potential options as well. And MAT is covered by Medicaid, so they can get the medication covered by Medicaid. Two more questions. One is a follow-up on that, and that is, if someone watches this video, how do they find out which doctors or where to go to get that medical treatment? They can certainly call the Health Department or Community Services. Community Services, Dr. C.C. Cook hosts a quarterly summit of pretty much everyone in the area who's providing medication-assisted treatment. So we would have the names of people and where they can go. I attend that summit, and again, I've been engaging a lot of our younger primary care. We started a public health rotation, so a lot of our residents who are graduating from training and actually planning to stay in the area are learning about MAT, so I'm hopeful that they'll start with MAT as well. Okay. And then last question. How do we make progress with the syringe exchange? So on May, as I said, New River Community Services is doing the community conversations, which I think is wonderful. A lot of people are coming out. Again, there are a lot of myths surrounding it, that it enables drug use, that it encourages drug use, and I have lots of data to show it doesn't. But May 29th, I want to get as many people there, because we are going to have local government. We're going to have judges. We're going to have law enforcement. We're going to have medication providers. We're going to have those in recovery. We're going to have representatives from the faith-based community, and just to have that conversation. And these are people that are doing this well in their communities. And the data shows that, you know, the myth that you're going to find dirty needles and syringes doesn't pan out. The myth that more people are going to start using doesn't pan out. It actually gets more people. People are 80% more likely to seek treatment if they're in a syringe exchange program, because a huge part of seeking treatment is trust. And if they don't trust government agencies, and it's illegal to use drugs, they're not going to seek help. If you could meet them where they are and develop that trust, they're 80% more likely to seek treatment. So we have lots of good reasons. How do we make that one more step after the May 29th to say, yep, we're putting it into action? So I've been doing the tour. After May 29th, I'm going to be doing the tour again, and I'm going to be engaging, because I have to apply to do syringe exchange. And in order to do syringe exchange, I have to have support, and Montgomery County qualifies. All of my localities qualify except for Floyd. I have to have my local government support. I have to have Community Services support, which I absolutely know I have. I have to have law enforcement support. I have to have peer recovery in place, which we have through Community Services. And then I have to have support from EMS and our first responders, and I know I have that. Great. So after the summit, I'll be doing the tour again. I know what works in one community isn't going to work in every community. I have to be very honest, though. I've been very encouraged by the engagement I've had getting out and about. People have asked some very good questions, and they're very curious about it. It hasn't just automatically been shut down. So... So I'd like to have the people come from North Carolina, from Huntington, West Virginia, from Kentucky, and kind of give us a highlight of what they're doing. We also have the sheriff from Smith County in Virginia who's coming. He's got it up and running down there. He was the biggest proponent to get it up and running down there. And then we'll go back around and start having some more conversations about what will work in our communities. You know, we can do it multiple ways. We can do it through the health department, brick and mortar, or we can do it using the mobile unit. And my goal is that our mobile unit is a mobile health department and offers all of the services. We have an exam room, so we can offer IUDs, we can offer Nexplanon, we can offer syringe exchange, we're offering hepatitis A vaccination, and we can get to the areas where people can't get to us.
Thank you so much.
More questions?
I'm sorry, I did want to mention one thing that Dr. Vissel sent us last week, and that was to recognize the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors as a public health hero for our outstanding public health service support in the community. I'm going to put this in the Board's Friday Report as well, but thank you very much for recognizing that.
Last week was National Public Health Week, and we couldn't do what we're doing without your support. We very much appreciate your support, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, the Christiansburg Institute?
Good evening. It's good to be here and to share, to continue to share about CI and its history. My name is Chris Sanchez, and I'm the Director of Christiansburg Institute Incorporated, and this is Ms. Debbie Sherman Lee.
I'm the Treasurer of CI.
And then this is Phil.
Hi, I'm Phil Calacat. I'm with Snyder &amp; Associates.
So we'll quickly begin by, Ms. Debbie, we'll just kind of briefly point out this image here and kind of some of what we see in the picture.
In this picture, you, if you see the people up on top, those are students from Christiansburg Institute building that building. That's one of the buildings that they helped build on the one hundred and eighty-five acres of Christiansburg Institute.
And so this slide here is going to really give everyone kind of an idea or a scope of the former CI campus. So we've Google Earthed and plotted out what once was the full one hundred eighty-five acres of CI's property. So you can see where the high school is located. This would be Scattergood Drive, kind of below the high school. And today, the Alumni Association has retained four point four acres of original campus property. But this is just a really powerful image designed to kind of show you the expanse of the school in terms of its land and where that reached across Christiansburg. So this slide here really identifies how money was spent in two thousand. There was a three hundred thousand dollar congressional appropriation from Rick Boucher that CI Inc. was awarded. This is going to walk you through the process of how that money was spent and how it was documented. There has been some questions about this particular grant. We've revisited this piece several times. We just really want to make clear that this grant for three hundred thousand dollars that was awarded to CI Inc., a congressional appropriation, was spent as we had identified it would be spent. This next slide will show you how we made ourselves construction-ready using that funding. This will identify, this slide will identify particular surveys and plans that the money was spent to purchase to help us really get to a place to actually do construction on the roof. So that money was used as it was said it would be used, and we can still actually make a lot of really good use off of the plans that we received with the awarded funding.
Looking at the, go back to that. Looking at the building as is now, you see that the roof is the main thing that we need to get done first in order to protect everything else once we start working inside the building. The funds that we have raised thus far in the, between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, the town of Christiansburg gave ten thousand dollars. Kipps Elementary Schools, they gave four hundred dollars. One Mr. Fentress class, his fifth grade class last year, gave four hundred dollars. They raised that on their own. That was the project they wanted to do. One hundred-plus of women who care. I went to them and asked for the money. I was lucky enough to get chosen to talk to the group, and at the end, they awarded us twelve thousand one hundred dollars plus. The Secular Society gave a matching five thousand dollars, totaling twenty-seven thousand five hundred. So this year and into two thousand twenty, we have gone to the town of Christiansburg, asked them for seventy-five thousand dollars. Montgomery County, seventy-five thousand. The town of Blacksburg, seven thousand five hundred. This is the first time that we have asked the town of Blacksburg to be a part of this, but they are a part of Montgomery County. Some of the, some of the things that we also asked, we had Marcy to write some grants. So the African-American Heritage Action Fund, unfortunately, we heard back, we didn't get that, but we're going to go at them again. We're not going to give up. The Ford Motor Corporation Fund, a hundred twenty thousand, and the Mary Morton Parsons Foundation.
I just want to piggyback on this particular slide. We've requested a total of ninety thousand from Montgomery County. The seventy-five thousand figure represents capital funding towards the roof. The remaining fifteen thousand is for operational capacity support for the nonprofit. And also, like Ms. Debbie just shared, this is the first time that CI has approached any other town outside of Christiansburg. And we did this because we know a lot of the alumni who went to CI came from all across southwest Virginia. And increasingly, as the momentum and the interest increased with CI, and we're hearing people wanting to get involved, we have alumni contacting us on the Facebook page, the question is, hey, why are you not also going to where I'm from? I'm from Blacksburg. Why are you not also going to Radford? I'm from the city of Radford. I'm from Pulaski. So what we're wanting to do is gradually continue to expand and approach additional towns and cities across southwest Virginia, and are really hoping that Montgomery County and now the town of Blacksburg can be a model for these other towns to see how important this history is, not just Christiansburg, but to the state of Virginia. Now, this is kind of a layman's sketch of our plan for the roof. We recently had the honor of signing a contract with Snyder &amp; Associates, a general contractor located in Blacksburg, for pre-construction services. What this will do is get us to a place to be construction-ready. If you have any particular questions about that process, we have Phil here that can help us answer some of those questions. But what we're anticipating is, having this contract signed for pre-construction services, we're really looking at doing physical repair on the roof in May. That's where we're at today. Ms. Debbie has shown you the amount of money that we've raised towards the roof with the twenty-seven thousand approximately. We can actually begin doing physical repair on the roof. Now, I know the folks on the border are aware, but for folks in the room, this is an enormous deal for CI and for the community. Lots of people have been waiting and working very hard for a very long time just to see anything done on the building, whether it be the roof or a window. So we're very excited to be getting to a place to actually show that and share that with the community. Now, this is an image of the actual Edgar A. Long roof, and as you can see, there's rippling on the roof, which indicates the structural instability. So with these pre-construction services focusing on the framing of the roof, we can see how important that is because of this rippling on the outer shell of the roof. There's some water damage we see on the inside of the structure for some of the support members for the roof itself. And then this was a fire that happened some time ago. You can see that there have been some supports that have been put in place to kind of fix temporarily some of that fire damage. But again, working with Snyder, getting us to a place to really tackle the framing of the roof is our first approach for the phase restoration of the building.
When we talk about tourism, Christiansburg has some rich history, and part of that history is Christiansburg Institute, the Old Hill School. So this is a time that we can have a historic district in Christiansburg that people outside of Montgomery County would like to come to, would like to see. There's a lot of interest in the history and what is going on with CI these days.
Yeah, so, you know, a majority of my work has become giving tours of the property. I have so many folks, whether it be tech students, or professors, or community members, who are reaching out to CI asking for a tour. Now, we know, looking at the Smithsonian Museum in DC, looking at Montgomery, Alabama, there's a new museum that honors the victims of lynching, which is also a huge piece of this broader discussion about race in the South. So we can look left and right, and we can see how African-American history is trending on a national scene. We know that the history of CI can carry itself to a national audience. So what we're really focusing on is learning other models who've done this successfully in their communities, because we know, as Ms. Debbie just shared, for example, if you look at the town of Christiansburg, Destination 2022 on their website, one of their priorities is having an active region or district for history and culture. We look at CI, we have four point four acres of original campus property, a historic building that's all located on former CI land. We have that district right now. So what we're really wanting to do is really cast CI's history in a national way, because, quite frankly, where we are as a nation, this story is needed. This is a story of self-determination, it's a story of success that required multiple communities and multiple races to come together and find a solution. So we're really excited seeing what's happening in Pulaski. There's the Kelfie Training School Project that's launching. And Roanoke, the Dumas Hotel in Gainesboro, has a lot of interest and a lot of momentum in terms of preserving that history, and we know CI has a voice in that tapestry. So kind of going in line with the national tourism of African-American history, we also know that there's real needs that the Long Building can facilitate. For example, if you're looking for a place to meet in the community, if the public libraries are reserved or the rec center is reserved, where do you meet, right? So your options normally are Starbucks, Panera, or a local coffee shop. We know that with the nine thousand seven hundred square feet of usable space in the Long Building, which spans three stories, that we can meet some of that need. There is a need for accessible community gathering space across Christiansburg and Blacksburg. So we very much envision having the building be accessible on the front end to the community in terms of gathering, meeting in spaces where we can really talk about the issues facing the community honestly and truthfully.
When you think about the public schools, we have seven hundred and forty fourth graders coming to visit next week. They're doing a tour from Montgomery County. We're working with the Montgomery County Schools, and we will be talking about the history of CI to these seven hundred and forty young people.
And this programming opportunity is really fantastic, so it will also include the Old Hill School, Schaefer Memorial Baptist Church, as well as the CI exhibit at the high school in Christiansburg. So we'll have approximately seven hundred and forty students on a two-day period, the fifteenth and sixteenth, coming to the CI property on Scattergood, taking buses up the hill to the Old Hill School, and then going over to the high school. And really, this is the first of many. We want to continue to be working with the school system, to be offering students this programming, and let them know, like, there's some really incredible, rich history right in our backyard here in Christiansburg.
Talking about over twenty-five books or manuscripts featuring CI, I'm going to list a few just for you all, and then if you'd like to know the authors, I'm going to say a couple of the authors because they were involved with CI. So, Christiansburg Institute, a proud place. Amanda D. Hart, she was a teacher, she was actually one of my teachers, at Christiansburg Institute. Up from Safe Slavery by Booker T. Washington. A Vision of Education, Edgar A. Long. And The Tiger and the Torch, Rita Holmes Irvin, who is a teacher in Montgomery County, also alumni of CI, and her daughter wrote that also with her, Davina Holmes. There are other books, Fifty Cents and a Dream, W.E.B. Du Bois' Data Portraits Visualizing Black America. A Proud, I think I said that, A Proud Heritage was James W. Smith and Ms. Amanda D. Hart, so she helped write two books. And so these are some of the books that you can go back and read and get some of the history of CI. I love this quote, "It's more than history." At Hampton College, people may go to school. At Christiansburg, the school goes to the people. Christiansburg Institute was not only just a high school, it was more like a community college. It made you ready to go out into, skill-ready to go out into the workforce.
And this particular quote, for folks who do not know, this is Edgar A. Long picture. And then the building that we talk about a lot is the historic Edgar A. Long Building, which is located off Scattergood Drive, right behind Dairy Queen in Christiansburg. But I want to briefly say, Delegate Chris Hurst, in February, when he was on the House floor, he actually read this quote on the floor, and then he also gave a little lecture, a little speech about CI and about Edgar A. Long. And we just had a meeting with Chris Hurst, because he's shown a lot of interest in helping to preserve the history. So this quote here is finding increased relevance today and where we are today with the work that we're doing around CI.
Looking at this picture of homecoming, I can remember being at Friends Elementary, which is now the Montgomery County Technology Building, looking down there, seeing the people there, going like, I want to be there. And so this is just one of the many pictures that we post on the Facebook page, the CI Facebook page and webpage. This is the basketball, one of the basketball teams. We thought we'd throw that in there, since we were into the Sweet Sixteen last week, so we thought we'd throw that in there, too. So that's one of the basketball teams from Christiansburg Institute.
And I think this is kind of what Debbie has just said, is that this was more than just a high school. In addition, it had the feel of a community college, but it was also a community of folks. So this was a highly competitive basketball team, they had a highly competitive marching band, they also had a football team that was very competitive, a pom-pom team, all kinds of academic clubs. I mean, if you drive by the building now, you look at that building, you might think, this isn't abandoned building, not much is happening. But what folks don't understand is, that was once a very lively, active, thriving community of folks, really committed to the education of their citizens in Montgomery County.
This is a picture of the last class at Christiansburg Institute, the class of nineteen sixty-six. I'm going to point to a couple of people. I know you all have heard of this young man right here, that's William H. Brown, that's Bill Brown.
Yep.
He was chief of town of Blacksburg. Another gentleman I'm going to point to is James E. Tolliver. He is, he was, he was a veteran. But there are many, many more on this page that I could talk to you about that spreads the history about CI.
And in this photo, just to note, the building on the left-hand side that kind of goes down the side of the image, that's Scattergood Gymnasium or Scattergood Hall, that building is still there, it's across the That building is still there, it's across the street from the Edgar A. Long Building. It's now housing a church. But that was the first separate Butte Butch Gymnasium in southwest Virginia. Across the street, that you can see on the right-hand side, I believe that's Bailey Morris Hall. And this is Scattergood Road we're looking at, right here in this picture. Now, that building was destroyed, but next to the Bailey Morris Hall would have been the Edgar A. Long Building, just to kind of give you an idea of kind of what you're looking at. That's really close to where you are right now.
This is the final graduation at Christiansburg Institute.
And that, that building there on the right, again, that's Bailey Morris Hall. So I just gave a tour to five community members this morning at the property. And I can take you to the Long Building and kind of have you standing in front of it. And I can also point, you know, right here would have been located Bailey Morris Hall. And that would have been that structure. People don't understand the magnificence and the scale and the sheer size of some of these brick structures were really, really, really beautiful. And as we said in the beginning with the first image, students actually built a lot of the buildings. They were learning stone masonry, they were learning how to work with their hands and learning a trade. And part of this, for at least students who were living in the dorm and going to night school during the day would help with the construction of these buildings. So it's really fun to just make sure that we also notice just the architecture and the craftsmanship that went in, as being an indicator of the level of education that students were receiving.
"Hail to CII" was the title of the school song. I'm not gonna sing it because I don't want to run you out of here. But I am going to just read the lyrics and then the chorus. I'm gonna read the chorus first, because you would actually sing the chorus in between each one, but I'm just gonna read the chorus and then read the lyrics. The chorus is, "Yes, we love her, battle for her, do and even die. Sing her praises on forever, hail to CII. High up in the Blue Ridge Mountains, where the skies are blue, stands our noble alma mater, just CI to you. Proud beneath the arc of heaven, amid the fields of green, Christiansburg, our foster mother, holds her sway serene. Proud beneath her shining portals, with her head held high, go her loyal sons and daughters, proud of CII."
Here's a link to find out more about what we're doing. We have a really awesome, active Facebook page, where there's lots of photos that are being posted daily, really honoring the history, identifying particular students, faculty, and buildings that were on the campus. We also have a very active Instagram page, a Twitter account. And then we just launched this past year, oh, I'm sorry, 2018, we launched our, our new website. And we're happy to take any questions that you might have about the presentation we've given this evening. Thank you.
Do you all have any kind of estimate on how much it would cost to repair the roof at this point in time?
So the roof is $150,000, approximately. And go ahead.
Let's, we should back up first.
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
We have a structural assessment from Jordan Truesdale, Truesdale Engineering. The next step will be to get actual structural drawings. And from that, we can develop tight pricing and actual pricing. We have a budget pricing, but that's plus or minus 30%. So again, the next step is to get drawings to tell us, we know what we need to do. Structural drawings will tell us how we need to do it.
How to do it, okay. Thank you.
Debbie, can you talk to us about one very memorable experience? And tell us the grades that you went through?
Okay. I was, I was blessed to be able to go to CI only for the last year, which was my eighth grade year. So one of the memorable things that I remember about CI was learning to, well, I'll say two things. Learning to do hair and cosmetology with Ms. D. Hart, who wrote two, two of those books. Another one was with Ms. Bradley, who was the P.E. teacher. And she was very strict, you had to have... We had white uniforms, if you can imagine that, one piece, and they had to be ironed. You couldn't wear any other color but the white. And you, like, even with the sweaters, you had to have a white sweater to go with it. If you were cold, you had to have a white sweater. She was very strict. But she would always let groups do, it was called Highlight Night. And we would get together and, and do a performance for parents and other students.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question. When you were looking at the reconstruction of the roof, I mean, just generally, does it look like the whole roof has to be re-engineered? Or can it be repaired?
There is significant, there's...
As far as the structure?
Yeah. The, the roof is significantly, the framing is significantly compromised, both from ongoing water damage, there was some pretty poor construction and repairs that was done after the fire. And so what we really need to do is not get too far out in front of our skis on this, and get the engineer to tell us, go up and really kind of get down into the nuts and bolts of it, so to speak. There are portions that are, that are sound, there are portions that, you know, we are definitely gonna have to demo the place, if that's...
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Chris and Debbie, I, I always get excited when I hear these reports on this, because I, when Chris took me on my tour last year, I was pretty excited about his vision for the, for the whole place. And he la, he la, he la, I can't say that word right now.
Elaborate.
Thank you. And there was so much detail that he, that he came up with, as far as not just the building, but the whole property itself. And it, it's just very exciting, and I think it would be great for this area. And Chris, I want to congratulate you, because I think back then, I was kind of thinking, "Well, you're not charging hard enough, you're not looking..." But I take that all back, because it looks like you're really making some headway, and I hope we can be a part of that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the public hearing on VDOT's six-year secondary road improvement plan. It's Mr. Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll have the, this is our annual public hearing for the secondary six-year road plan. I'll give a few remarks sort of in general about how the process works and what the hearing's for, and then we can hear from the people who've signed up. We have several speakers signed up. This is a chance for the board to hear from the public as we begin the process of updating the plan, which would take place or go into effect on July 1st. So we have a little, a little time to do that. Before I get to those, I'd like to just make another little comment. This is the beginning of our, not only Virginia's and VDOT's, but National Works and Awareness Week. So you may have seen some signs up. The federal highway administration is getting into this, and VDOT does it every year. And so you may see some signs, a lot of orange up, as we get into the construction season. It's important to let people know that you're gonna start seeing a lot of work zones, which is, is a good thing, it can be annoying, because there's also a traffic impact to that. But a few stats on that, and this is just in work zones, this is just not total crashes. But there were 2,500 crashes in Virginia in work zones last year. Federally, over the, across the country, you look at, close to 800 people killed in work zones over the last, in 2016 and in 2017. So it's a serious thing, you all know the factors that contribute to it. There's distracted driving, there's all kinds of factors in that, and that's a problem in all kinds of drive. But we're trying to get people to remember that when they travel through a work zone, there's people, often just nothing but a barrel or a cone protecting them from, from traffic. So it's a, it's a serious issue. And one thing you might see that we've started to do, mostly on secondary roads, where we have a flagging operation, maybe replacing a pipe, we've started to put out, if it lends itself to this, portable rumble strips. We can take some rumble strips and put them down, they're not nailed down or attached permanently. And that'll get people's attention before they see that flag or up there with the stop sign. You can take them right back up, too. Those have been proven to be a big help. So if you see those, or you hear some rumble strips where you don't normally see them, hopefully those are the portable ones, and they'll move along when the work is done. All right, that's my, that's my commercial for Works and Safety Week. I'll get into the, the opening remarks of the hearing, and just remind the board and the public that this is for secondary roads. Those are roads numbered 600 and above. There's a separate hearing, that'll be May 7th down in Roanoke, for the entire 12-county Salem District, and that's for the primary roads and interstate system. We still hold public hearings for that, even though we've gone to a different process for that. If you, requests for projects on the primary system are accepted on an application basis that the localities make, I mean, for the smart scale process, and it evaluates it on separate. But we still do hold public hearings, because the Commonwealth Transportation Board still has the final say over what goes in that plan. And they like to hear from the, from the public, despite, or in addition to what, what some of the numbers say on these applications. So that'll be, that'll be next month. So this is, this is just for the secondary roads. Your funding for the secondary construction, I'll start off by saying it's not nearly what it used to be a long time ago. It was in the millions of dollars, now it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which sounds like an awful lot, but road projects are expensive. It can cost up to like a million dollars a mile, just to pay very minimally standards on unpaid road. So the allocation for next year is about $400,000, about $300,000. Has, is earmarked for unpaid roads, you get a little over $100,000 as part of the state-collected telecommunication fee. The state collects fees for telecommunication companies to locate on state VDOT right-of-way. That money is collected at the state level and distributed to the counties based on population, percent of the population to the total. So Montgomery County's is about a little over $100,000, $106,000. And that can be used on any secondary road, can be used on a paved secondary road. The rest of that allocation, the $300,000, roughly $300,000, has to be used on an unpaid road that's got a traffic count of over 50 vehicles a day. So I'll go with the draft plan that I sent, is simply the plan as it exists right now. We are going to complete two projects, we've been on the six-year plan for a long time. Sydney Church Road, we're doing a mile left of it, that was a two-mile road, and we did half of that a year or so ago, we're gonna do the other half. And then we're gonna do the last mile of Yellow Sulfur Road. And that'll complete Yellow Sulfur Road from Janelle Road up in the Blacksburg area through to the town of Christiansburg. Those are the two top projects. If there's a handout there, sometimes we start with like a project zero, zero priority. There, there are some county-wide type items, guardrails, signs that are charged to the construction budget, and we just put that at the top. Anything used for that has to come from the telecommunication fee, because it's not an unpaid road. Top priority, we add a Sydney Church, just because something had to be, it doesn't hold any real more importance. Both that and Yellow Sulfur will be advertised this year. Sandwich in between is Mount Pleasant Road Bridge. We put that on there, just because it is a secondary road project. It's constructing a new bridge, but the money does not come from your secondary funds. It's all being paid for out of our district bridge maintenance funding. But we put that on there because it is a secondary road. Third priority is Yellow Sulfur Road, as I said in the last section of that. It's a long section, we don't like doing much more than a mile at a time, because it'll be, we'll go to contracting, it'll be a mess for that entire mile. But I think we'll all be glad when that, that road is complete. Number four on the list is Fairview Church Road Culvert. That's a repair of that culvert. Repairing, it's a low-water bridge structure, basically what it is. We're gonna add a few more pipes to that. Not, we're gonna try to raise it a little bit, there's, there's hydraulic issues in that, but if you raise a road too much, without it being a bridge, you're constricting the flow of water. We're backing the water upstream, causing flooding there, so we have to be careful of that. What we're looking for is just a safe structure. It'll still get overtopped in high water, but that will require construction money. Fifth on the list right now is Taylor Hollow Road. That's to pave about a half-mile section from Luster's Gate Road out towards a dead-end road, but there's, it gets a lot of traffic, that's the only way out. And sixth on the project on the list is a project on Craig Mountain Road. We did a small section, sort of as a safety and dust abatement project, leaving a gap in the middle. The part we did, there were more, more houses, we started kind of that, but to close that gap, we've got about a third of our, of Craig Mountain Road. So with Sydney Church Road and Yellow Sulfur Road being completed this year, there will be room to add some more for next year. They will go at the bottom of the list unless the board decides to change the order in some way, because we haven't really started, we've started to do some design on Taylor Hollow, but obviously no construction or anything like that yet, so those are, it's still up to the board to set the priorities for the last section. If there's any questions on the process, I can talk about that now, or we can turn it over to the public hearing list.
Do you have any questions?
I have one very small one. I just didn't write it down in, in time. Did you say it can be up to a million dollars a mile for minimal standard payment?
Yeah, we're, we're finding that, that even when we do just like a half-mile section of a rural rustic road, it's, it's close to half a million dollars, top of $1,000 to do a half a mile.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I had it right in my notes.
Yeah, that's, that's very round, a lot depends on the drainage, what kind of pipe we have to put in. If there's some concrete work or anything like that, but that's a good round number. It could be less than that, too.
Sorry, and I believe you said it, but I just wanted you to repeat it. And how much money are we talking about that, for the, this secondary road plan that we have?
About $400,000 for, for this upcoming fiscal year. And it's gonna be roughly the same, it was brought about $400 last year, so you're getting about $400,000 a year.
And so to go to Ms., our Vice Chair, Demont.
Oh yeah, so you can, you can do about a half, less than a half a mile a year, if you do it that way. And we're looking at a mile of Sydney Church, a mile of, or more of Yellow Sulfur that we're looking at doing this year. So it takes a while to add up, to collect enough money to do these longer projects.
And these are already existing state-maintained roads that we're upgrading? This is not Chris talks private road that goes through Walton or something along those lines, that's coming into the system. This is an existing road that we're trying to upgrade. And I believe you said at least 50?
50 vehicles a day.
Okay.
Thank you. There is, there is a line item that is, you'll see in the, in the budget, and I should have put that in the, the construction budget. Montgomery County has, in the past, participated in the rural addition process. And that's a means by which a private road can be upgraded, paved, and added to the state system. And you, but you're only allowed to put 5% of your allocation towards that per year. Back when you were getting close to, you know, three and a half million dollars a year, that was quite a bit. When you're getting $100,000, you know, I guess you're putting $20,000 a year to that.
Yeah, $20,000 to upgrade a road that costs a million dollars to do a mile.
A mile, a mile, yeah. So our rural additions have been very, very small, in, you know, half-mile at most sections. But you've, you've got about probably 200, I think, in the, that you've been putting towards that account. And, and I've been putting the $20,000 every year into that, and it's just a matter of finding a good candidate. It, it gets tricky with, because you require right-of-way, you have to have 40 feet of, of right-of-way dedicated and on, on these private roads. Unlike some of this current road, VDOT has a 30-foot easement on, on all these other roads. So we've got 30 feet we can work with, and we only maybe need five feet maybe on each side of private property. When you start doing a rural addition, you're talking about a road that may cut through somebody's property. So you're asking for a lot more people's property when you start doing rural additions.
Did you check into the little connector road up on Brush Mountain? By Ray Ridge, and there's a church up there?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, Paul Brasman working on that. Paul Brasman working on that. I don't have that information right now.
And then Galleon Ridge Road is out by Roanoke County. Do you have any idea how many vehicles drive that road?
I can find out real quick. I'm sure that Mount Taboran has the required 50. Sometimes we'll do an extra count when we know it might not, the official count book is probably inaccurate depending on when they took the count and where on the road they took it.
And then Dry Run Road is mostly unpaved also. Is that, does anybody know?
That's a lot less, I believe, than Galleon Ridge, but I could check. I'll have those numbers by the end of the comments.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So you're going to call the speakers?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we will open the public hearing for the Six-Year Secondary Road Improvement Plan, and our first speaker this evening is Michael Barbara Shepherd. Can you come to the podium, please, if you'll state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address the board?
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Shepherd. I live at 3579 Grous Road, Shawesville, Virginia. We live on Ryan Road, which is road number 822. I've lived there all my life, but lately the road is deteriorating. We're asking that it be paved. It is, we live on Grous Road, which is right off of Ryan Road. There's 24 people that live on Grous Road. Patricia Cooper lives there. She owns Open Arms Daycare. Junior Cooper lives there. He has Cooper Refrigeration. There's two businesses that come from that place. The road in part is, it's like going over an embankment. We're asking that guardrails be put up. My granddaughter's friend got over a little bit too far. Her truck went over the hill, so it is a danger there. That's pretty much it. We just, there are school-aged children. We're in and out. We all were. That's pretty much it. Do you have any questions? We figured out that if we could talk the government into letting us keep our taxes, we could fix the road in no time. They just don't want to break it down. That is, the road is in terrible shape. When you come off of the hill, if there's not a guardrail there like in the wintertime, if you go off the road, you're going to go right into a trailer or one of Bill Ryan's buildings, and I don't think he'd like that very much. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker on this item is Julia Fallon.
Hello. I'm Julia Fallon. I live at 3310 Gordon Drive in Blacksburg, and I've had the pleasure of living there since 2004. It's Brush Mountain Estates, and we can see 460 from our house. And Autumn Lane is a little connector road that goes into Brush Mountain Estates. And Autumn Lane is in abysmal condition. It's the width of one lot. There's one house on Autumn Lane, but many people use Autumn Lane, and a lot of construction traffic has gone through it, and snowplows and all the wonderful amenities we have. But in the past years, it has deteriorated. And I had called a couple years ago, and then I called a couple weeks ago, and they said, "Come to this meeting." So I'm here, and I'm here to say that I would love to see Autumn Lane repaved. So Autumn Lane, right off 460, Brush Mountain Estates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker that signed up is Roberta Merrill.
My name is Roberta Merrill. I live at 1050 Gobbler's Knob. I've corresponded a little bit with Supervisor Bone with regard to Gobbler's Knob, and after the introduction a moment ago, now I'm a little extra nervous because we are looking to get into the rural addition plan. Looking on the VDOT website, their criteria are listed, and granted, this is a simplification because I know the process has changed over the years, and this is the publicly digestible version, but in public use for at least 20 years, available to the public use 24 hours a day, sufficient right-of-way, serve at least three occupied homes, be able to safely handle the traffic volume, and be connected to other roads already maintained by VDOT or the locality. Gobbler's Knob has been in place in some form or another since the '70s. The original, the oldest home on the road was built in 1978. At that time, the road may have connected to Indian Run instead of to Happy Hollow, but in the '90s, I believe it was, Happy Hollow itself was paved. And during that project, they built better drainage, not just directly on Happy Hollow, but at the beginning where Gobbler's Knob runs now. And Gobbler's Knob, part of that land was actually used by VDOT as a place to put rock fill in order to help with the Happy Hollow project. From that point on, I could give you the year-built dates on the five occupied houses that are on the road, and it just goes to demonstrate, there's been over three occupied houses on this road for 30 years. So we've certainly got the longevity. We've been taking care of this road, you know, as an evolving entity all this time. It started out, the man who built that first house back in 1978, he ran some form of landscaping and maintenance company. He had his own dump truck. He had a special board he fit in the back of it so he could run his two nice tracts of gravel and leave the grass in the middle undisturbed. But of course, by the time you're up to five houses and different construction efforts, the road's wider than it once was. The whole width is gravel. We regravel it every couple of years. And at this point, the man who built that house in 1978, he's left us. He died last year, completely year, and his son can mostly keep his tractor up, and we get along all right, but we're to the point that this road has been in service long enough. We're seeking the county and VDOT's help to take the next step with this road. And of course, as noted, with the response to the introduction, I am a little nervous, but any questions, anything you'd like to know about the road? Oh, I am. There's one thing I am forgetting. We have specifically signed the petition for consideration of a rural road addition. The four of us that own the property that the road runs through, that you would need additional right-of-way on, have all signed, agreeing to donate that property to the county. You would not be needing to buy any land from us. It would just be about going straight to construction with whatever VDOT believes is the best road.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure that the audience understands, this is our turn to listen to them, not respond. I know several of them have asked us if we had questions, and it's not that we don't have questions, but it's our turn to listen to them, and I just wanted to make sure that the folks in the audience didn't think we were ignoring them.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, our next speaker under this section is Robert Goldstein.
My name is Robert Goldstein. I live at 1976 Big Vane Road, Blacksburg, Virginia, in McCoy area. I would like to begin by thanking both Mr. Clark and Chris Price and Montgomery County Supervisors for correcting a deadly situation, namely the line of sight on McCoy Road where it intersects with Big Vane. You are literally saving lives of everyone who drives up and down to the river, and we appreciate that. But we would also like to see the other completion of the paving and the acceptance into the rural addition completely for Big Vane Road, which, as well as I remember in 2009, I believe they came out and they staked the road. My understanding was that it was already considered for funding, and because they could not at that time obtain a right-of-way for the line of sight, we were taken off of the program, and we were told that once the line of sight is corrected, then we would be restored back into the program, which we came and we petitioned for that, and we warped it back in the program at number 12, which is the last number. We were number one, and we were funded, as well as I understand. It is also my understanding, which I could not fully confirm, that there has not been any rural addition roads since that time. Maybe someone can address that and get back with us. So I'm just going to read this. "It is our understanding that Big Vane Road was the last project considered for funding and paving under the Rural Addition Program. We, the citizens of Montgomery County, and in particular the residents of Big Vane Road, are resubmitting to your consideration the following: that Big Vane Road be the next funded project in the Rural Addition Program in Montgomery County, and we would also like to know how much is in the fund right now that is allowed for the Rural Addition Program." Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Patricia Colotowski. Did I say that right?
Close.
Close. Okay.
Patricia Colotowski. I live at 1580 Taylor Hollow Road. Taylor Hollow Road is approximately two-mile-long dead-end road off of Lusters Gate, so once you go in, you have to come back out the same way. As the speaker from VDOT said, they are upgrading the very first portion of that, and also getting a bridge replacement, which we're very excited about. But most of the problems are actually beyond the bridge and beyond where they're upgrading. What we're upgrading is very flat. But beyond that, we have a low-water bridge that does get overtopped, as low-water bridges do. However, this one, every time it overtops, the water goes one direction, and it gouges out anywhere from six inches to two-foot-deep hole. And it can take VDOT anywhere from, sometimes it's been three to five days before you can get a car in and out of Taylor Hollow. You need a large truck. You just can't get a regular vehicle up and down because there's just, it's just too deep a hole it gouges out. So that's a design issue there. Beyond that, we have safety issues and drainage issues. The road is primarily one lane wide with some pullouts. There are places it's one and a half. There is no place it is full, two lanes wide. There are blind curves. This winter, someone coming in went around a blind curve. That blind curve is, the mountain comes down, the road goes like this, and it goes down to the creek. They went off straight in the ice and flipped their car into the creek. I've come across vehicles flipped coming out the other way as well. He was fine, got out, got stopped to make sure. But that's an issue for blind curves. And then there are drainage issues as well. Water ponds on the road in many places in the winter. The roads at the bottom of the north side of the mountain, so we don't get a lot of sun, that stays in ice. Everyone else is clear. We have ice for two to three weeks after that. You can't salt a gravel road and ruin it. So VDOT's solution is occasionally they might come put some gravel down, but instead we just get ice for a mile and a half. There are also drainage issues where at ponds, you also can get concentrated flows which cause sediment issues. The road runs entirely along Slate Lick. Slate Lick goes to the north fork of the Roanoke River, which is on a federally impaired list for sediment. The county may end up having issues in terms of how to address that sediment impairment, and having a road that continually puts sediment in the river is not helpful. So in summary, the issues that go on past where VDOT is currently looking at upgrading are a low-water bridge that continually gouges out and can become impassable, safety issues with blind curves, and drainage issues that can then cause issues as well with ice and issues in the winter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aaron Saba.
My name's Aaron Saba. I also live on Taylor Hollow Road, 1745, at the very end to, I've got my driveway, and then the end of the road is right there. I want to talk a little bit about the low-water bridge in particular that we have there. As the previous speaker said, it will wash out, and it will get a big ditch all the way across the road when it overtops, and you can't get a car out for days. My concern is more safety issues because at least, you know, any time you guys hear the news or the weather and it says that there'll be flash flooding, our road is washed out, and so it's probably at least once a month, can't get a car through there for, you know, maybe a day. Sometimes it's two or three days before the water goes down, and they can come back and refill it. So, you know, I had an experience. I had surgery, and in the middle of the night, I popped open some stitches, and I went to go to the doctor in the morning and turned around and couldn't get in. Luckily, you know, cleared up that afternoon, but, you know, if I can't get out, can't get emergency vehicles in, I've got a couple of small boys, and they do what small boys do, and I can imagine them, you know, having some kind of emergency and wanting to get out, and if it's, if the road's washed out, we just can't, we just can't go. So I think it's great that they're fixing up the big bridge, but if we could get some help on that low-water bridge there, just to, you know, I'm not even sure what, I don't know what to do, but fix it up so it doesn't overtop or doesn't wash out, I think that would give us a lot of peace of mind there. That's all that I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Saba.
That's the first time anyone's ever said my name right.
Well, it's only because she was first.
I know. She said you were listening, and I believe it. So my husband was reading my notes in the notebook, and he stole all my name points. But I'm still going to get up here and say that I'm a mom. I've got those two kids sitting back there as quiet as they've ever been. But normally what they're doing is they're running around and breaking their arms and falling off of things. We have a favorite ER nurse. We're that kind of family. It really does terrify me. When we moved out here about five years ago, we didn't know we were going to be stranded so frequently. I've turned away, you know, family coming from out of town, whoa, can't come? Stop them. They're like, "Really? You're trapped?" "Slightly, Mom, slightly." You know, it's a real safety concern for us. There are other aspects, you know, we miss work, we miss school, we miss events. I can deal with those, but to be trapped up there and know that if somebody, you know, one of our neighbors has a heart attack, or someone falls and hits their head, or just, you know, all the normal things, to be making changes in what you're doing every day when there might be rain, to have your colleagues say, "Ooh, it's raining. Are you getting home tonight?" You know, it's, it would be fantastic if we could do something with that low-water bridge. I appreciate all the other stuff that's on the agenda for our road, but that's the one that keeps me up at night worrying, so that's all, really. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Misty Osborne.
My name is Misty Osborne, and I live as well on Taylor Hollow Road. I live on 1889. I am practically the last home that lives past many of my neighbors that has come tonight, and I do appreciate it. I've actually got some pictures here of the low-water slab that each one has been discussing that is a major issue on this road, and I have come to the point to where it has become very frustrating. I as well have four children, and my main goal, I've talked to Chris Price, and he is the one who guided me here to this meeting tonight. And my main concern is the fact that EMS cannot get to our home. We have went past this weekend, and probably there is about 20 dwellings now that live beyond the low-water bridge. It's not just on Taylor Hollow Road, but that is actually beyond the slab. It has become a nuisance, as I have had other neighbors as well that have tried to get out to go to work. They cannot go to work. We have children that go to public school systems that cannot go to their schools, and my goal is to see foremost that this slab gets taken care of. I do appreciate, like the other ones have stated, the maintenance of widening the road, and I understand that there is another bridge that's being put in. And to me, that is cosmetic, but it's not the safety issue that I feel like that is very necessary for all the homes that are beyond this low-water slab. Another thing I'd like to bring out, too, is that Taylor Hollow Road has areas where I am. I'd like to bring out too is that Taylor Hollow Road has areas where I am pretty much practically the one that lives the father's back. The road is caving in. VDOT comes and puts a cone up. It has sat there for probably six months and nothing gets done. And so, as she did state, it does, they do come in and put gravel down. But as you see in the pictures, this is a very concern of many of us that live on this road. And my goal is to see it to become more safety for the elderly and the children to be able to have access for EMS to come out. Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, the last speaker we have signed up for this public hearing on the six-year road plan is Rita Bradbury.
Hello. I have a couple pictures also if I can pass them around. I have more that I'll leave with Mrs. Smiley over here before I leave and I'm not a public speaker so, but I agree with everyone who has spoke about Taylor Hollow Road. I also appreciate everything that's being done, but we've been there for 12 years and the problem on Taylor Hollow Road is this low slab. When the water, the first picture that's going around is today with no more rain than we got. You see the three holes that it's got to go through. Well, when the water goes up over the bridge, it does make the huge ditch and you cannot tell how deep the ditch is because the covers, the water's got it covered. So, if you don't have SUV or a truck, you're going to drag. And VDOT has to come out and fill the ditch in, which washes out the next time it floods, goes into the creek. But due to the environmental restrictions, the gravels and rocks that cannot be scooped from the water bed has gotten so high on the left side that there's no room for the water to go but over the slab. A few examples of the hardships that we have seen and the dangers that we have seen. One flood not too recently, two or three kids was trapped on a four wheeler during the flood in the middle of the bridge, of the slab. It was on the scanner. People were scared to death because you know how fast the water goes. And I think the gentleman sitting right there is the one that saved those children. And that was probably the most scariest thing. My husband has a severe heart condition. He had a five vessel bypass. Two of them failed. He has a blockage now and the doctors know that he's going to have a heart attack. But to go in and fix the blockage, it's too dangerous because they have to go through the bypasses. So it's very important, and they can't do that. So it's very important that if we need an ambulance to get in there, that they can. This is the same area that Larry Linkus a few years ago, they had to bring four wheelers in and get him, there was an accident. I think he broke his leg while he was hunting. And if that had been flooded at the time, there's no way to have gotten him out. A lady at the end of the road, just two times recently, has had to call an ambulance for her father. And then she also has broke her leg and foot. And so these are the instances, if, if there had been a flood at the time, you couldn't have got them out. So it causes people to miss work, children to miss school, and most importantly, the person, the ambulances and can't get into the people. So I would like to request that the county puts this in for the six-year plan and VDOT make improvements where there isn't flooding issues or that flooding is not as frequent. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Board members, this is all we have signed up under this section for the public hearing for the six-year secondary road plan. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Kenneth Smith and I lived in Taylor Hollow for around 10 years. And I've worked construction for 30 years and I've learned a good bit doing that. I don't know whether any of y'all know anything about concrete stone. The next time that, that low water bridge washes out that big gully that everybody gets hung in, if they would backfill that with concrete stone for the mixed stone and cement together, it don't have to be regl, cement, just cement and stone mixed together. It's not like you pour slab, backfill that with concrete stone and it will not wash out. Now that for the three little kids, they was on a John Deere gator. It ain't the water on the slab that keeps us from going in and out. They got through that until the front wheels of the gator went in that big gully that washes out. Sometimes it gets so deep that your front bumper of a four-wheel drive truck will hit the bank and you're stalled. So, my daughter was at work that day and she, I don't know where she got her information from, but she called me and told me that three, Ms. Osborne's kids was hung in the middle of that low water bridge. And I've been sick all this whole last year. And I says, I'm going down there and try to help them kids. And she said, no, you're not able. I said, well, I'm going. If they wash away, I'm going with them. And I meant it, but when I got there, the three kids some way had got off that gator and made their way out. And the gator went on down the creek and lodged against a tree. I don't know how much damage was done to it, but I thank God that them kids made it out. But they were soaking wet from head to toe and this little girl right here, she was shaking so she was so cold. So I got her in, but I got all three of them in my truck and turned the heater on at full blast and warmed them up. And they said they'd walk on home. I said, no, you can't. The water's worse up the road than it is here. And where the brush and stuff had stopped the pipes up, the water had run, come out in the road and was running down the road. And down there where it's supposed to go onto the road, it was coming across. And it was over the front bumper of my truck. And getting back to the low water bridge, everything that's been spent there, filling that gully up, went with the water on down the creek. Now if they'll fill that up with concrete stone with a mixed stone and cement together, that will put a stop to that place. Just, just the water on the concrete slab, once I make it up over that gully, if it ain't too deep, I can go on across the bridge. But I thank God for everything. And I want y'all to check all that mix and cement and stone together and fill that up the next time. And maybe we won't have no, no more four days that we can't go nowhere. Thank God.
Thank you. That's all that I've signed up.
That's all we have signed up. Does anybody else like to speak on, on this subject? Step forward. You have five minutes. State your name and address, please.
I'm David Colotowski. I also live at 1580 Taylor Hollow Road. And we've been there for 20 years, just about. It'll be 20 years in October. And after the first few years of seeing that low water bridge wash out, we figured, all right, the state's going to figure it out and fix it better. But here we are. It's 20 years since we've moved in there and it's the same problem each time where they, it washes out, they put gravel in and it washes out again. They put gravel in. And I'm sure there could be some money saved by fixing it permanently. But to everybody else's point, we agree with them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else? See anybody come? We'll close this part of the public hearing. Before we take, go into public address, we're going to take about a 10-minute break. We'll be back in 10 minutes. What's that?
9:05.
9:05.
9:05. Call a meeting back door, please. Next on agenda would be a public address.
All right, thank you. First speaker we have this evening is Marcy Schnitzer. Did I get that right?
Good evening. I'm Marcy Schnitzer, 606 Rainbow Ridge Drive in Blacksburg. And I'm here speaking tonight as vice chair, for vice president, no, vice chair, sorry, of the Christiansburg Institute Incorporated Board. And I just wanted to follow up a little bit on our earlier presentation because when I was thinking about 185 acres, I was like, I have no idea at all what 185 acres looks like. It just wasn't really even in my head to, to imagine that. And so when we found, when we were able to map this out on Google Earth, if you think of where the Christiansburg Institute property is now, it is at the very bottom or near the very bottom of this picture. And if you kind of look in the middle to the right-hand side, tiny little building you can see is the Edgar A. Long Building. Now, think of this back in like 1900. Edgar A. Long and Charles Marshall were very young men who were bought from Tuskegee Institute to oversee and to lead Christiansburg Institute. At the time, it was roughly 100 acres that they received. And Long and Marshall, again, as very young men, went around the state and around the country to raise money for the school. And they were thus able to purchase the remainder of the 185 acres. What you see in this picture with the very bottom being Christiansburg Institute, actually that little wedge encircled by trees. Up the hill from that is Christiansburg High School. That was once on Christiansburg Institute property. Above that is, I believe that's the Tall Oak Neighborhood. Beyond that is the Food Lion Plaza, the Christiansburg Rec Center at the very top. There's also another neighborhood. We were discussing, you know, the location of the farmhouse associated with it. And basically, the farmhouse is of course beyond the perimeter, but the farmhouse was probably fairly adjacent to the Christiansburg Institute property. Also, going back to what we currently have with the Christiansburg Institute property, that little wedge surrounded by trees, if you go over to the far left, that is where Edgar A. Long and his family and Charles Marshall are buried, separated by, you probably know, a bunch of factory buildings. So, when I look at this property, I see at the very bottom, the beginnings under Edgar A. Long and Charles Marshall, looking up to this vast array of property that had livestock, chickens, pork. They slaughtered their own pork and produced their own food, not only for the campus, but to sell in the community, orchards. And to think today that it's this piece of property plus way off in the distance Edgar A. Long's burial place is what is left. Edgar A. Long's vision is building in his burial place. It's really powerful to think of. Now, does this history have a place today? We've been working really hard to put information on our Facebook page about the history of the school. Beginning with Black History Month in February, we had a posting every single day. Women's History Month, we had Women of Christiansburg Institute. What's really fascinating though is to see the responses. I told Town of Christiansburg two weeks ago, we had people from 15 states visiting, liking and following our page. It's over 16 now. And what we hear people saying is, you know, yes, we have major civil rights leaders. And that's not what they're saying. But, you know, we know civil rights leaders, prominent civil rights leaders. That's what we talk about when we think about black history. But what people are saying in those posts is, this is real history. This is my history. They can see themselves in Christiansburg Institute's history. And so, this is, again, as they pointed out, it's not just a static history of buildings and, you know, really a, an incredible timeline that encompasses all the major points in black history from 1866 on, but it's a human history. It's people who live in this community. It's people that, in fact, we have records that we could trace back to plantations in this area. We have some records relating to that, though obviously not all were associated with that. A very important part of Montgomery County's history, the region's history, the state's history, and we believe significant at the national level as well. So, very pleased to be able to present to you tonight and hope that we can continue to partner with you on this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, the other speaker we have signed up this evening is Emily Templeton.
Hi, my name is Emily Templeton. I just handed you guys out a set of flyers that we have. I live at 2504 Capistrano Street in Blacksburg and I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to talk about a new local initiative that my husband, Brian Templeton, and I have started this year. We're calling it the Earth Day Pedal Post. The Earth Day Pedal Post is a letter writing event where we are gathering environmentally themed letters from people who live in the Blacksburg and Montgomery County area. And we're delivering those letters by bicycle to our government representatives. So, our elected officials include the Blacksburg Town Council, you guys as our Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, state legislators and our representative and our senators in Congress. So, what we're doing is gathering letters. Those letters are coming from individuals, from schoolchildren, from businesses, and we are asking that those people write environmentally themed letters on the topic of their choice. And we provide them with a simple skeleton template that they can use if they want to, but that template does not tell them what to say in any way. It just sort of lays out a letter format that makes it official and easier to start writing. We do not read those letters. They, other than if we need to, to ensure that we deliver them to the correct person. So the content is entirely up to the people who are writing them. And we, yeah, so we're encouraging people to, to write about environmental topics of their choice. And then the second part of this event is that all of the delivery happens via bicycle. So, and we're also making that a community event as well. For example, we're delivering letters to the Blacksburg Town Council at the, at the Blacksburg Farmers Market on the Saturday before Earth Day. That's Saturday, April 20th. It's also the Saturday before Easter. And we're doing that in a family-friendly handover event that, that should be fun for both the members of the Town Council and fun for local community members, get some exposure for everybody, sort of as a talking point around which the Town Council can engage with local citizens. And we would like to do something similar with you guys. A second part of the, of the delivery of these letters is to have a family-friendly bike ride that goes the length of the Huckleberry Trail to take letters from Blacksburg and deliver them to Christiansburg. So we're trying to do that, again, as a family-friendly event, paced, so that anyone can, can join us for as much of it as they want to. And then have a fun handover event with you guys. So- So we're really excited about this event. We've been working on it for several months now, trying to get momentum and get letter writers and get bicycle riders and then contacting all of our government officials. We're really excited about it because we feel like it engages, it's a form of civic engagement to help people feel connected to their government. It also helps our representatives, those who represent us and make decisions on our behalf, know what issues are important to us. It also promotes environmental issues in particular. That's sort of the focus of our letter-writing campaign. And we're centering around Earth Day for that reason. And finally, it highlights bicycling as an alternate form of transportation. We're really lucky in this county, thanks to some of your work, that we have really nice bicycle facilities, particularly the Huckleberry Trail. And so we're, part of the reason we're having the bike ride be along the Huckleberry Trail is to highlight that as a facility that our county has that is not just a nice recreation area. It's also very useful. It's a very safe way to bike through from Blacksburg to Christiansburg and back. So we wanted to also highlight that wonderful resource that we have as a county. So I'm here today to talk, to ask for you guys to join us and support. The first thing that we would ask you guys to do is to be willing to receive letters. You know, we're bringing letters from your constituents and we would like to have you guys receive them. And as part of that, we would ask that any letters that you receive, could you please respond to them? We've been telling schoolchildren and such that they'll get letters back from anyone they write to. So that would be much appreciated. And then finally, we're, I need to work with you guys to see if we can find a time and place on that Saturday, Saturday, April 20th, when we can hand over letters. So it can be here, it could be at the end of the Huckleberry Trail, anything that works for you guys. If some of the Board of Supervisors could meet us, that would be great. And we can hand over letters. And you guys can hand them out to everyone who couldn't attend. And then a last invite, I would like to invite all of you guys to join us as well. I would love to deliver your letters to the Blacksburg Town Council or to our senators, to our congressmen, to our state delegates, to our state senator. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that. Or have you come bike with us as well. So, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all we signed up, yes, sir.
That's all we have signed up for, public address. If anyone else would like to come up and speak, please come forward. State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Penny Franklin, 857 Woodrow Road, Christiansburg. Hadn't intended to speak tonight. Was actually trying to stay away. But, and I hadn't intended to speak tonight because Christiansburg Institute is a very emotional piece for me. And listening to the wonderful stories and seeing the history is like, there's a piece that's missing. And it needs to be acknowledged and the conversation needs to happen. So I was in the second grade when segregation ended. So I had no experience at CI except for my older brothers and sisters. And remember listening to that band because I only lived, I lived a little less than a mile from the school. And on Friday evenings, listening to that band fire up and watching the band march through parades, it was something else. Going onto that campus when my mother had to pick up the older siblings and seen the big kids, it was, it was just so much fun, so amazing. So what happened was segregation ended and that campus was basically demolished. But that campus was the focal point for community. Because during segregation, the only places we had to congregate was at the schools and at our churches. That was community. When segregation ended, I lost contact with many of his kids that I had gone to elementary school with for years and decades. Some I've never seen again because they lived in Pulaski and different places, right? So it was kind of traumatic for me. And then being thrown into all-white schools where you were called names and your teachers made it clear that they didn't want you in their classrooms and you were not educated, okay? So the time that it has taken, the fight, the struggle, to raise the funds to be able to restore the Edgar A. Long Building, to me is just horrendous. This should not happen. This is a part of Montgomery County history. It's a part that needs to be acknowledged, that yes, here in Montgomery County, we had several, separate, and trust me, it was not equal. Now, when you came out of CI, you were ready for the world. You either had a trade or you were ready to go for, to a four-year college if you could find one to go to. My grandmother and her brothers and sisters came from Covington. They boarded at CI. My father went to CI, as I told you, my older siblings, right? But it was because they had no place else to go. The fact that community, and I can't stress enough, even as a small child, understanding the community that was centered around that school and that campus, I lost that. I don't have that connection with the African-American community because it was splintered when segregation ended, okay? Some people say, oh, well, that's a good thing. And as older I get and the more I think about it, the more it's like, hmm, maybe not so much. And there are a lot of people who share those same feelings because there were a lot of things that went wrong with segregation. We had white flight. We had schools that shut down, whole school systems that shut down. So for Montgomery County, to be a part of, right now, being able to get that roof on that building, to be able to start preserving that building and raise that, that little four and a little piece of acres back up to say, this was a part of Montgomery County history. It was not, it's just not the black history in Montgomery County. It's a part of Montgomery County history. It's a sore spot in many ways, but in many ways, that was a community that gathered around that campus there. And the struggle to make this happen, the struggle to help folks understand, you have got to commit, you have to put your dollars, you have to put your voices, everything to make that campus come back to life, even in that small way. It has to happen. It has to happen because when it doesn't happen, it makes it feel, it makes me feel like I didn't matter. It makes me feel like what we had in that community on that campus didn't matter. And it did. It did in so many ways. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public address. Moving on to the addendum.
No addendum this evening, sir.
Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, your call room, please.
Ms. Ben.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Sp... Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Bays.
Aye.
Mr. Cherafeen.
Aye.
Senator Moss.
Is there a motion going to work session?
Seven.
Second.
Madam Secretary, your call room, please.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Puskaskey.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Bays.
Aye.
Mr. Ben.
Aye.
Cherafeen.
Aye.
Senator Moss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have a presentation this evening. I believe Mr. McGruder is going to be the presenter to give the board an update on where we are with review of the fiscal year 2020 budget. And then we will have an opportunity for the board to have discussion with staff on any questions you may have.
Good evening. I'd like to give a little update on where we are with the fiscal year 20 budget. We want to talk a little bit about some additional revenue that we're going to have to fiscal year 20. You know, we spend a lot of time putting the budgets together. And after the budget is presented, there's still a lot of work that goes in behind the scenes. The budget's analytical work continues well after we present the proposed budget. We continue to monitor and analyze our undesignated revenue sources throughout the budget process. And a few years ago, Carol came up and spoke. And what she said was, is that we kind of go back in and sweep the corners, find, look at every revenue source that we have, reevaluate that revenue source and make sure that we have identified all available resources that we can include going into the next fiscal year. So collections are analyzed each month from December through April to determine whether or not there's any additional revenues that can be added to the proposed or on the past budget. And as a general rule, depending upon the year and our growth patterns, additional revenue is generally available. And the reason for this is that we have more time to evaluate the revenue collections. More time equals more information and we can provide better estimates. At the time that we put the proposed budget together, really, we only had the opportunity to analyze our December and January collections. Then after we present the proposed budget, we have the opportunity to look at two more months' worth of revenue patterns. And so after our further analysis, we've identified about a half a million dollars that is available to be added to the fiscal year 20 budget. The additional revenue is available in the following areas: real estate, interest earnings, and delinquent collections. We actually have a small shortfall in one area, and that's designated compensation board revenue. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in more detail on the next slide. This slide shows the detail of the additional revenue. As you can see, I highlighted what our advertised budget is, what the new estimate is based on these additional analysis. And you can see the difference. So if we just go line by line, you can see that there's an increase in real estate of about $112,000. That is due to the changes that were made by the Board of Equalization and added new construction that was added after the Board of Equalization had set the reassessment numbers. We have interest earnings of about $289,000. That is due to a banking services contract renewal. At the time that the budget was put together, our interest rate was 1.5% on all revenues, or all dollars above 8.5 million that we had in the bank. That rate went up from 1.5% to 2.1%. And that adds about $289,000. And then our delinquent collections, I'm estimating an additional $100,000. And that's due to two things. One is the added value from the reassessments is going to put more money on the table. And then the treasurer has talked about having some additional tax sales. And what that is, what we hope is going to happen is, that's going to make our collections be more current. And when you do that, one of two things are going to happen. You're either going to have more delinquencies or you're going to have an increase in our collection rate, which is, in both cases, will add some money to the table. So we're adding another $100,000 for that. So that's roughly $500,000 in additional revenue in those three categories. On the designated revenue side, in the compensation board for shared expenses, we're seeing a slight decrease of $10,000. Really, the only one that matters in this whole discussion here is the one that I've highlighted. And that is the treasurer's office, and that is due to the change in the treasurer's position. And essentially, what that means is, is that we had a more experienced treasurer prior to the treasurer that has taken over. And so we have more money that was coming from the compensation board in the past than will be for a less experienced treasurer. So we're losing about $10,000 from that change in position. So when you take the whole revenue picture together, we're looking at $492,000 in additional revenue that we could put on the table going into fiscal year 20. As far as known additional expenses, the New River Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority has revised its requested accounting. The advertised budget includes an increase of $28,901 for the authority. However, the revised budget requires an additional $25,000, almost $26,000 for an increase of $54,888. And that's all I have for this evening. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
Do you want to have any questions?
Not just.
So on the last page, the 28,9 and 25,9, additional for $54,888. Is that going to come out of that $492? Or is that what you're...
So on page five, your chart, it also, you have there on the third line, the pending tax sales expectations. On the first line, you say added new construction. So that's what you know now versus is there, you know, there's construction all the time. And so if they haven't broken ground, does that...
That's not part of this at all.
Okay.
It's the Board of Equalization, at the time that the book was set, there was new construction number on there. More new construction was added to the book that is showing up on January 1, 2019. So that is identified new construction that will already be on the book when it's published. The new construction that you're referring to is, in addition, will show up on the 20 book, which is what is part of the fiscal year 20 budget going forward.
So that will be just additional revenue that we might get at the end of the year?
It's already, it's already built in.
The additional construction is already built in?
It's already built in.
Okay.
I think it's good news. I have a question. So this covers through April. What happens with May and June?
I mean, we'll continue to look at our revenue estimates going forward. And so, you know, I'm doing projections throughout the entire year. So, you know, there hasn't really been that much of a change. The biggest change that I've seen is the change in the banking services contract, which is putting the lion's share of the money on the table.
Yeah. But you would let us like sort of know like...
Sure.
...what's going on the next two months, too?
Yep.
I'm really excited about this because it gives us a little bit more flexibility and, thank you.
Are you finished, Mary? I'm sorry. I wanted to kind of highlight two things. One, that the change in the interest rate on the banking is almost $300,000. And that's just, from what you said, it was like 0.6%.
It went from 1.5 to 2.1%.
So I think that that's pretty significant. And then also, I wanted to point out how incredibly impressed I remain with all of you. Little quick calculation, this is 0.24% of our overall budget. I think that that is phenomenal, to be this close to finalizing the budget and to have your numbers so incredibly accurate. I just want to say thank you very much for the hard work, for the update. I think it's incredible the work that you guys do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No more questions for staff. Thank you all very much. Mr. Chair, at this time, while staff is here, and I see we have several folks from the school board office as well. I know that the board has had questions that they may want to discuss with regard to the budget. We haven't had a chance to talk about the budget since the public hearing last Thursday night. So at this point, let you recognize, board members, and staff will do their best to provide answers.
Supervisor Tuck, you have any questions?
I'm going to listen to my fellow supervisors for a little bit first.
Hey, you pass it up. Supervisor Steve?
I really don't. I haven't digested this new number here. So I'll pass it up.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't really have any questions.
I don't really have any questions.
Supervisor Bohm?
I have a couple. Perhaps, and I don't know if this is the right time, but Supervisor Fitchikowski or whomever, on the school resource officer and school safety committee that was designated towards the end of last year, I don't believe we've had a report out of everything that's recommended or anything like that. Is that true? Did I miss any report out?
That's true.
Are we expecting a report out anytime soon?
From me?
No, from the committee?
I do not know. There's a meeting next week, so that'll be something I'll bring up.
I still think that potentially reviewing whether school resource officers in the other schools that don't have school resource officers would be a good idea. And also, I would recommend that the, about $1.5 million that's designated to, or 1.2 designated for the capital, capital projects, I guess, for the school budget be allowed to be used in their operations budget. I know that I've gotten about 100 emails from various people throughout the county asking us to do that. And it's pretty well distributed through every district. So in addition to that, several people from the Christiansburg Strand, I believe at the last school board meeting, said that they would even be willing to pay extra real estate taxes to be able to move the Christiansburg capital projects, new schools, renovations and stuff like that, which was new, new representation that I hadn't seen in the last couple of years. So I was pretty impressed with that. And I would highly recommend that we support the state raises for the teachers and what it takes to do that. And that's all I have.
Well, first of all, I support the budget that came to us. As far as, you know, personnel on the county side, I think that, you know, it's very important to look at that because we've had positions that we haven't been able to fill and I'm very supportive of that. I think there were 11 positions that were mentioned. And I especially wanted to say something about the animal care and adoption center because I know that because we're opening seven days a week, there is an issue with covering the desk. And so I was glad to see that there's a position in there for that. I still have concerns about, I'm really thankful that we've got the school resource officer in there that was like, sort of like the experimental one. But now that person is actually there, but still that person is going to be running between two schools. And you guys know that my goal is to get a school resource officer in every elementary school. But, you know, I'll just keep bringing it up. Okay, so I support all those. Now, what I want to know specifically is, you probably saw, I mean, I told Yan in the run-up times, I'm really interested in looking at that penny and a half and putting, if it's the whole amount or whatever amount needed, back into the operational part of the school board budget. Because I think, and I've said this before, that all of our county employees are an investment of taxpayer money, just like our buildings are. Doesn't matter if it's school or county, it's all an investment of taxpayer money. And so I really want to know, do we know, does the school system need the whole penny and a half? First of all, is there any new news on that or anything we should know about that?
We're going to make a presentation tonight.
That was after we get done. Is that something you want Mr. Krantz to answer then?
I mean, the only other thing I'm going to bring up is, of course, the roof for CI. But I really want to know about this penny and a half.
Okay.
What I'm supporting because I want to get those salaries with our salaries.
We're still going to be three and a half, 2.8% behind.
So this is what we've asked for to date, which is an increase of $10.9 billion. We have an increase in our state's federal and local revenues of 2.9 million, giving us a shortfall of $8.1 million, which was our request. Knowing that we're not going to get $8 million, we've looked at what would we go through? And the first thing is on our salary enhancements, which we've done that in order to do two things. One, a 3.5% raise for all employees. And two, the adjustment done so that we can become more, stay competitive with both Radford and Salem and other surrounding areas with us. So that's allowed us, when we looked at those numbers, to refine it and reduce the request by $250,000. The next item is the salary and the health insurance with our school board members. Not all, and talking to them, are going to take us up on the health insurance. And so we've reduced that by half, so it's a $42,000 adjustment. Next, we looked at, we had different departments come to the school board, make a request for retirement and/or health insurance. And we're leaving in the VRS for the nurses, but the retirement for the aides, the miscellaneous employees, the bus drivers and bus aides. On health insurance, these are employees that don't make the 29-hour threshold, they're slightly below. And we're taking those out and that's $1.782 million. Then, we looked at, and the thing that I apologize, you can see the yellow number that's changing as I'm making the reduction through each time. So then we got into the technology. The technology is intended, we can cover it with our carryover, you'll see in the last column, that's our intent. So we take out the increase in the bandwidth, the technology lifecycle replacement, the one-to-one Chromebook, and the technology infrastructure, and that's $633,000. Then, on the school bus replacement, we've been able to get four of the buses now. We would reduce that and eliminate the 776 with 388 seven year end, or in carryover. At this point in time, I'm at $4.6 million, so I'm still short. I need to be at 4.2, which would be the penny and a half plus the 3 million. So in order to do that, and one thing to please remember as you're looking at these numbers, we've had an opportunity to video this today and get it to our school board members, but our school board has not had an opportunity to really talk about it. And ultimately, they're the body that has to make the final decision. So this is an administration, which we believe and are comfortable with this presentation we're giving tonight, and the line item adjustments that we're proposing. But at the end of the day, please note that it is a school board decision, it's not, it's not my decision. I'll just give them information. So then, the next thing we do is we reduce, in order to balance this, we reduce the number of 23 positions, which is an $84,000 average cost. We go from 23 positions down to 19 positions, that's adjustment of $339,000. The thing about the positions is this, of the 19 positions, 18 are in the classes. 18 are directly involved with children in our school buildings. They're not dealing someplace else, they're in the schools. The administrative position is needed in order to address all of the turnover that we have, particularly in our classified area, which is my operations group. My custodians, the bus drivers, my facilities group, all of them have, we have a fairly good amount of turnover. And it's ensuring that we're fully staffed, ensure that the buildings are going to, lights are going to turn on every morning, the heating and the air is working every day, buses are properly operating. Those things we have to do to get our students to school, get them a good grade education in those buildings and then get them home in the evening time. Any questions? Just balance that out.
So you would need the whole penny and a half to meet the salary, the salaries and the 19 positions? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am. If we make, if there's less money that's allocated, then harder decisions have to get made inside this budget to balance it out.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question about that? What are the four positions that are being cut, that are proposed to being cut from 23 to 19?
There were other positions requested, there were classroom-related positions. We just went, we were able to cut those down. We had over 86 positions requested by the schools. And each school believed that those positions were well needed. We cut that 86 down to the 23. We're just not able to fund the full 23 with the current funding form we have.
Tommy, I was trying to remember, and I want to make sure my number's right. The mobile units at Harding, that y'all are going to, the nicer mobile units you're talking about bringing in there are 1.4 million?
It's roughly, you know, so there's a little bit of confusion there, I was talking to a school board member earlier today.
Okay.
So it's $65,000 a year to rent the four modulators.
Okay.
To bring them in, bring the utilities, is generally about a half a million dollars. You know, set it up and bring that in. And then there's about a $50,000 fee when we take them out. It's not as much as the five.
So 65, so it's a half a million dollars, are you just factoring in there will be years that it will be there?
I factored it in for five years when we were initially discussing it.
All right, because I, and it may have been, I know there were a lot of numbers thrown out and I just, for some reason, I'd heard the 1.4. So you're really looking at, all right, I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, $500,000 for the setup?
Correct.
All right, and then we're looking at $65,000 a year rent?
Yes, sir.
And then what were the other additional costs?
We had, well, on Harding alone, it'll be, when we transmit it back, you know, when we're finished with it, there's about a $50,000 cost for us to take them apart and ship them back.
Okay. And then, if I saw the latest numbers on built use renovation, was about 5 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Now, and I deal with the private sector a little bit more, but I noticed that you are eliminating retirement for part-time positions, health insurance for part-time positions. At least my dealings in the private sector, that's fairly common, that you don't provide those type of benefits for your part-time employees. Is that something different in the school systems, that part-time employees do get full benefits throughout Virginia?
In my experience, no, sir, it's not, it's very similar. But these were, where this came from was our, each department had the opportunity to come to our board. They expressed a desire for our employees to receive these benefits. It was asked by our board to compute what the cost would be. We included it in our request. It's a goal, but it's something unfortunately we can't afford at this time.
That's all the questions I have.
Supervisor Steve?
No.
I have a comment about the nurses. I think it's really important to put that VRS part in there, is that $150,000?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
And the reason I think this is a critical thing is because, as having been an elementary teacher and to see what those nurses do. But I also know it's harder to attract nurses because they have so many options open right now. I mean, if you're a nurse, you can almost write your own ticket.
And that's the reason why we fought to keep the nurses into the equation from a retirement perspective, to be competitive.
And they are there all the time, you know, Monday through Friday. So I think that's probably a good, a good way to maybe keep and retain and recruit.
I believe so, yes, ma'am, I agree with you.
I've just got one question. You got one?
I just wanted to say something very quick and just clarify to make sure I'm understanding you accurately. I understand that this has created some complications within balancing your budget, but am I hearing correctly that the one and a half cents, if transferred from capital, will, and put into operating, will definitely solve the salary problem?
It solves the operating budget being balanced.
Okay.
If, if we don't do the full one and a half cents, then, and look, I appreciate any time elected officials have to balance budgets because you've got difficult choices to make with limited capital on both our school board and y'all there as the board of supervisors. But if we don't get the full one and a half cents, then I need to start tweaking and making other cuts to balance the budget out, to keep the budget balanced. Because we're committed to the three and a half percent raise and the other salary adjustment. That's a major goal of the school system and the administration and that's something we'll do everything we can to accomplish that goal.
So I completely understand that and don't have any questions about being supportive of it. I do have a concern though, that if something major, like a major building system was to fail, a roof or something that's, you know, six figures or more to do a repair, I do have a concern about where we would come up then, and I know that's shared by some of my colleagues up here, where we would come up with funds to make a major building system repair if we don't have anything in the capital fund. And I know we're putting stuff in the capital fund this year, even if we move this penny and a half. But that's the only hesitation that I feel is just, I want to make sure that we're also planning, should a disaster happen, that we've got some form of reserves sitting there to help deal with that.
And I have the same concern.
Yeah.
You know, and the CFO had, in order for me to pay for something, I've got to get the money there to do that. You know, with the COO guy, it's the CFO's job to fund the money and I just go get it done. But I get to wear both of those hats here. I think what you'll see is, we're looking at the cash flow on the whole Christiansburg Strand project. And probably at the end of the day, when those numbers are finalized, and we're working with Craig and his team, and let me commend them, they're great to work with. And I've seen some other areas where they're not so nice to work with, and this team is very nice to work with. I think there'll be some dollars there that as we're doing the projects, we can set some of our dollars aside kind of into a reserve account that we can use to address those challenges we've got in our buildings that are there today and are going to continue to be there as we go forward.
And that's why I bring it up, because I do know that we've got some, we've got a really long maintenance list that, that you guys chip away at very diligently. And so I appreciate that that is something that you've given a lot of thought to.
I think we can work something out on that. I did, I know you have the final answer here because we're still working out some cash flow and analyzing some things. But I think it's something that is very workable, that wouldn't put a burden on you as the board of supervisors.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On that same topic, I had a discussion with Dr. Myers about the same thing. And he assured me if something happened, he could find it in his budget to fix it.
I believe at the end of the day, I think we can. I'm looking at a number of different things as we speak. But I do believe that when you look at the history excluding what happened at Blacksburg High School, if you look at our normal history and the challenges that we've got, I think the operating budget would have items that we could, either from the two cents money that may or may not be in the mix, it just depends on how we shake things out, and/or some of our other operating funds could be available to cover some of those challenges. I do, I agree with Dr. Meyer 100%.
Well, the two cents, you know, it's, it's in limbo because one time we're going to pay debt down with it, another time we're going to save it, so.
Well, what a challenge is, that's the uncertainty with that right now, is just the cash flow. Right. If you don't have a cash flow, then, I mean, you can't do anything. And right now, with the way the cash flow is, we have to kind of reshuffle, and we're working with the county on where the money's going to be available so we know which we can and what we maybe have to defer off. You know, maybe you just do the design while you do some, do some construction. Then you turn around and as soon as you get some additional capacity between both entities, that then you can start maybe the next project. It's just, it becomes a timing issue, I guess is the best way to say it. And we just haven't finalized that, but I think we will here soon.
All right, one more question. I might have misread it, but in your first budget, oh, you said from 23 employees down to 16?
Well, this one has 23 to 19.
I mean, the first one was to 16.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So you moved up three more?
Once the academic side, looking at and trying to keep the PTRs. And the thing that's difficult, and I understand where you're coming from, but the thing that's, the challenge here is this. Since 2009, this district's enrollment has gone up 425 students. Yet, in that time, the number of teachers is 35 below, today it's 35 less teachers than we had then. The thing that's occurred since then is that the district has a goal of a low people-teacher ratio. has a goal of a low people-teacher ratio. And, and listening to educators around the country, the biggest thing in the success of any child's education is the teacher that's in that classroom. One of the things that drives the success of that teacher is their ability to interact with students. The thing that stops them from doing that is when you start giving them a large class and they don't have the time to do the proper interaction with their class. So the goals that, that Montgomery County Public Schools set of eighteen to one in the K through three, twenty to one in the fourth through eight, and twenty-two to one in the nine through twelve is great, but that's going to require more teachers. The second thing is, this county and community, as I've learned, is a big believer in career technical education programs. But when we do career technical education in many programs, I'm not going to have the same number of students in those programs, while we have a great success and we have great programs. I may not have the same number of students in those classes as compared to an English class or to a beginning math, of Algebra I class. So my number of teachers are going to be higher because of that. As a result of all these great programs we've got, we're sitting here fully accredited. And there's many states, many districts in the state that would be real proud to say that and accomplish that. I think that success of full accreditation is, again, it's a hundred percent, or let's say it's largely due to that teacher in that classroom and the building administrative team that's in that building each and every day. The central office is a support function. It's what happens in the building. And I know Dr. Meyer believes that because we've had this conversation. He is a former teacher and principal. The success of any education starts in that classroom and then in that building. And that's what this, that's what we're asking for. We'd love to have all eighty-six positions. It just, we felt like one, we'd be funding for it, and two, that's kind of on the real list. We'd love to have all twenty-three positions, but we don't believe, when we look at our priorities and what we, what we think our, what our goals are and what we're striving for, we have to take that cut. It's the same thing with, with the, the uncertainty about the capital. You know, from a CFO perspective, I'd love to have a big reserve sitting out there. It'd let me sleep well at night. But looking at our needs and where that priority is, just like y'all have to do coming up in a week, it's the same thing here. We think this works out and it balances it out, and it's something that we can work with and still accomplish every time.
Now, when it was sixteen positions you was asking for, I got it at home. I can't remember right off the top of my head. How many of them positioned was teachers, actually teachers?
Of those positions, I believe, of the sixteen, fifty, it's either fourteen or fifteen were actually in teachers. The three that was mainly added here was in our guidance when the state adopted, when the governor adopted his final budget. There's now a standard on our guidance program, and that we did have to add some positions for that.
Guidance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that spur any more questions?
Can I ask? You rattled off the teacher-student ratios for the three areas. Can you say that a little slower so I can break that up?
So, okay, so K through three is eighteen to one, and that's not in counting our special education program. Special lab, which is a special lab-only class is nine to one.
Okay.
Four through eight is twenty to one, and nine through twelve is twenty-two to one.
So for the 425 students that we have and thirty-five less teachers that we have, in order to keep this ratio, is that the eighty-six positions?
No, ma'am, that was, well, that was between PTRs as well as programs.
What's PTR?
People-teacher ratio, I'm sorry, excuse me. I apologize. It's keeping their people-teacher ratios below the threshold as well as giving them the teachers that they, they need to continue to offer and expand the programs that they provide in their schools.
So if we just, I mean, were we at overstaffed before we lost those teachers way back when?
I couldn't answer that. I mean, I wasn't here. I think, just doing some basic math in my head, I don't believe the district was overstaffed. I think, I think that what has happened is as many districts throughout the country. When the recession hit, all of a sudden you saw PTRs that went up to twenty-fours and twenty-fives. And you've got some systems, particularly Los Angeles and New York, or larger school systems, it's not unusual to go into an English class or a math class. Now picture this. Your scores, like us in the SOQs, are based on certain tests. And yet you go into a math class and all of a sudden you have forty, fifty kids and one teacher. And the space that was designed for third.
So the 425 students is basically twenty teachers right there, just out of growth?
That'd be a proxy, yes, ma'am.
And then the fact that we lost teachers really means that, you know, we were probably in today behind by fifty, really, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's the thirty-five plus the twenty or so.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Well, as a former teacher, I can tell you that the student-teacher ratio is very important. We wouldn't have these schools accredited and the scores that we do if it weren't for, hold, all the hard work that all these employees do across the board. But having the smaller class sizes is really, really important. I've got a question about the guidance councils. Is there extra money from the state to help you all pay for the guidance councils? Because I was reading in the paper something about that.
It was very minor. We haven't seen the final, final numbers, but our calculation says it'll be immaterial.
So you don't think you'll, that we as a county, school system will?
We won't. It'll be kind of like the SOQs where we get about, you know, sixty percent of the funds. I don't think it'll even hit that mark. I think you're looking at somewhere around twenty percent.
Okay. And I know another thing that happened over the time that you were losing people was the middle, the whole middle school transition when you had to, middle school teachers lost one of their planning times and took on teaching more classes and that, that caused a compression also with the, the teaching staff, so, yeah.
Does anybody have any more questions?
No more questions, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tommy.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
You know, we just got some new numbers. I'm going to digest it. But I will say, for me, looking at the request by the Christiansburg Institute is pretty compelling.
Yeah.
If you look, yes, there was an education that was provided, and some of those folks seized that education and achieved great things. Bill Brown was the chairman of our board, very respected police chief. N.L. Bishop was educated there, president of the Jefferson College. So there's some great people that were able to come out of that. But also, there were some folks that, you know, that didn't get the same opportunities that they would have gotten if they had those, the full, been able to go to all the schools just like are, many of my ancestors were able to. And so when you start looking about trying to preserve that building, I'd ask folks to think about, you know, we just got those numbers. We've, I've gone through two presentations, and Supervisor King and, and Chair King, excuse me, and Vice Chair Demonts were with me at Christiansburg Town Council, so this is their second time. But we've got additional requests from the 911 authority of about 25,000. We've got a $75,000 request from CTI. A twenty-five additional, as I read it. So that would be a total of about 100,000. We have 497,000 based on our staff's efforts. I'm just saying, it's something I would ask my fellow supervisors to think about when we're talking about preserving a piece of history. And, you know, you started seeing those World War II vets, they were getting those trips to go up and see those memorials before they died. Or starting to see the CTI graduates, and they're getting fewer and fewer by the year. And wouldn't it be a great thing for some of those graduates to be there in that sixty-six class, to be able to see that building being back, put back into use and talk, allow them to be able to talk about their experiences? I know that there's a lot of things that have to be done in the community. And yes, we would be stepping up, and I hope entities like Virginia Tech, people in the private sector, and other communities. But I would just ask you to think about that as you're going through, and this weekend I'm going to be going through the budget, and I'm happy to talk with anybody about that as you're.
I want to, I want to say something that Chris, Chris, I'm on your train with this one. I was on the train last year, but we didn't have the money to do it. And I would really like, we only have $10,000 allocated in the budget for Christiansburg Institute, and I believe they asked, yeah, they asked for fifteen, you know, as an increase, plus the money for the roof. And I, I so think that this, I've met so many people over my time here, that like you were saying, Chris, that have gone out and made such a difference in the region. And this is, this is an historical monument. And, and we need to, and I love the idea of having it be a community center again, and actually having a place that we could go and have meetings for various groups. I think that's a great idea. So I'm on your train with this one. I'm on board.
Can I ask a question that relates to that? So I was looking through the budget, and, you know, we've got 5,000 for the Montgomery Museum and 5,000 for Smithfield Museum and stuff like that. I was curious, when those museums were being constructed or being built, did the county put forward extra monies in order to get them up?
I can testify about one of them.
Sure.
The Montgomery Museum. I watched the Board of Supervisors, I wasn't on it. I watched them give $10,000 in one year to the museum to get it, to get it off the ground. It was unbelievable at the time because that was back in the, probably, oh, golly, that had to be in the eighties. It was unbelievable, but they gave, gave $10,000.
We've allocated, I'm looking at staff, haven't we allocated some money to the museum for roof issues over the last several years?
We did one of the first years when I was on the board. And yes, I will say also, the museum has done its own fundraisers and, and helping. And you notice, I'm not saying we pay for all of it, but they're asking for 75,000 and hopefully other entities in the community. It's just something to think about.
As a follow-up to that, working in the nonprofit world now, a lot of times, entities or individuals will give matching funds. Does the county do that at all?
We've never established any program for matching funds for.
Do you know if it's allowable?
Board, the board could set a policy if that's something the board wanted to do.
For example, if we said, yeah, let's give them $75,000, but we want them to raise the other $75,000 over the next three years, and we'll match dollar for dollar up to that point, you know?
You could certainly do that.
Because that inspires other people to, you know, to donate too. And they're short. They're short the 150,000. So if we can be part of something like that as an engine, I'm definitely supportive of that kind of option, too.
That was no comments at this point, Tom, like I said.
Well, my only other comment is, like, it goes back to something that, you know, we've always talked about. I really like the fact that we're in a position right now that we can actually have some decision-making with some flexibility because of the reassessment. And I think it puts us in a sort of a, you know, a good position to really start funding, as Craig says, funding our future. And I'd sort of like to roll with that, you know, even after the budget process is completed, completed for this year, to keep rolling with that and to maybe talk about some things that we all, you know, agree need to happen and need to be funded and finding ways to do it. So that's my only ending comment.
Just wanted to add to the dialogue, again, to remind everybody about the onward NRV request, since we're talking about outside agency funding. The difference in what we have funded and what they have requested is, I think, around $26,000. I wrote it down somewhere, but now I can't find it, of course.
I think that's right.
Oh, yes, 26,000. So I wanted everybody to consider that as well. And just to add my two cents about the Christiansburg Institute. I think what Ms. Franklin said was extremely compelling. Not that the arguments made by the Christiansburg Institute were not compelling. I am sold and convinced already of that. But Ms. Franklin commented that this was a part of Montgomery County history that needs to be preserved. I agree with that wholeheartedly. Also, the Christiansburg Institute, the Edgar A. Long Building already has a failing roof, so I think time is very critical here in making the necessary repairs to that now, because once the roof is gone, the interior of the structure could also be ruined beyond repair, and then we will have not preserved a very important piece of our community's history.
Anything, Steve?
Yeah, I would definitely chime in on the Christiansburg Institute. I think that's good. And from what I understand, Craig, we already had 10,000 in the budget?
Yes, sir.
So it would only be an additional 65.
I think that 10,000, though, was for their, they have sort of ongoing operations, and that's what we've been giving the money for.
They requested 15,000 for operations, as we did with a number of agencies. We staff recommended level funding, which was 10. So they requested 15 for operations and 75 for the roof. So it's a total of 90, and we've only included 10 in the budget.
Okay, all right. I was thinking it was all part of the same thing, but, okay.
Do outside agencies, what is our funding? A little bit over $2 million?
2.35 million.
I would like to see us after we get through with this budget session, to have extended work sessions to talk about everybody we give money to.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. And you're talking about over $2 million.
Sir, a lot, and some of that, a lot of that is mandated for various outside agencies, but there are some that are elective that this board chooses each year. We do have a joint budget review process that consists of the administrators that need, early in January, February, to hear all the requests. But I do think it would be good periodically if the board, and I agree with you, after the budget season, so you could step back and really have a conversation about, are these things you want to continue to support? Are there other things that you would rather support? And, you know, when you look at, I mean, 2.35 million, that's almost three cents of the tax rate that you're using for these, yeah.
And I know some of them are overlapping because some of them do the same thing the others does, is the way I look at it in the book.
We have a lot of agents.
I mean, we got to think one thing, it's a taxpayer's money.
Yes, sir.
We got an answer for it. Is there a most glad work session?
Some move.
Second?
Ma'am, secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Seven O's.
Don't do it, Marty.
You don't have to.
Any more, Frank?
I'm going to take just a minute on a couple of things while some of the school board folks are here. I did take the information that Chair Coran presented last Thursday night with regard to the Capitol, forwarded that on to Davenport on Friday, had a conversation with Courtney Rogers, and we will be following up on that in the coming days and be reaching back out to you guys and letting you know where we stand with that. It's a sad week with a couple of funerals. I don't know how many of you know that Annette Perkins, who was our longtime board member, board chair, her husband passed away last week, so services for him will be later this week, Thursday and Friday. Also, I had the opportunity to attend a funeral today for Carolyn Light, who was one of our 911 dispatchers. Very, very moving service. Sheriff Parkin and a number of law enforcement folks were there. Carolyn had worked in Anarundel, Maryland, many years ago. They sent representative to the funeral. It was just a very moving event. And ask you to keep our 911 dispatchers in your thoughts, because it's been, it's been a tough time for them up there. Last thing I wanted to mention is I'll be sending out an email to the board to check your calendars for Monday, May 20th. We've talked about having a follow-up, extended work session to talk about Capitol projects for the county. And rather than try to tie you up on a Saturday, we thought we might look at a Monday in May where we don't have a meeting. I know we've had lots of meetings, but I'll send a note out to you if. had lots of meetings, but, um, I'll send a note out to you, if Monday, May 20th works, we may try to do something that evening. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Super supervisor B.
Um, in light of the six-year plan, um, I think we need to, uh, get that road trip going for us to get out there and look. Uh, I know, uh, we obviously had many people from, um, Taylor Hollow Road, um, but there are other roads in the county that are, that equally as bad, and we really need to go out there and take a look at them and probably sit down and do some prioritizing.
Has Judy's, I'm sorry, has Judy sent out a, has anybody from staff sent out an email on that that you know, trying to coordinate dates?
No, I do not.
Okay.
If I could intervene, Mr. Clark said earlier that he was going to contact Judy to get some dates.
Okay, thank you.
So she probably will be sending out something soon.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicky.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's one of my concerns that we, uh, get on that, uh, it's, it's pretty sad. Um, Mr. Clark reminded us that we started out well over $3 million with money for roads, and now we're down to 400,000, and, um, and then, and our citizens are getting really frustrated, especially the folks tonight, and there are other roads that are in the same situation as Taylor Hollow, where you get a little bit of rain, it washes the road out, it takes days or weeks before repairs are made, um, and I'm sure Vidal is overwhelmed in a lot of areas, and that's why they can't get to it right away, but, um, that's definitely something, uh, I think we need to make sure we get done this year.
Thank you. Supervisor B.
Um, I have one report, but I just wanted to ask, are we going to follow up on the bike thing some way?
Can.
Okay. Okay, this is my report. I'm excited to announce that our county's first Race for Ace held at Blacksburg High School on Saturday raised $12,000, and the community response was incredible. We had sponsors, participants, vendors, businesses, Debbie was out there, um, and I want to give a shout out to the planning committee because they worked so hard, I was honored to be a part of it, but Martha Ann Stallings led this committee, and we had law enforcement, we had Sheriff Hank Parton, and he was also there on Saturday, Chief Anthony Wilson, of course, he was there on Saturday, who, both of them were on the planning, along with, uh, Chief Mark Sisson from Christiansburg, Mayor Barber, Gunnan Karan from the school board, Brian Kits, the Blacksburg High School principal, Guileen Wood Surr, she was, and she's assistant principal, and Kelly McPherson, oh my gosh, she is a teacher in the county, she organized the whole race part of it, it was actually, it was incredible, if you could have just been there. Uh, Erica Tolbert and Angie Covey, of course, from New River Community College. And so we're going to have a meeting in May to sort of debrief and think, you know, what could we do better, like, were there any little glitches that we need to fix? They even had a dog out there dressed in one of the Ace for Race shirts, and of course, and I started thinking, oh, we need to bring the animal care and adoption dogs out next year and dress them up and have them walk and raise some more money, you know, but it was great, $12,000, that is so remarkable for the first time, this is our first time. You know, Giles County is a little bit ahead of us with their mud race, and they've been doing it for a while, but I think $12,000, that's really remarkable, so there's your happy news.
Thank you. Supervisor B.
No report.
Supervisor Shepard.
I'd like to apologize for my inactivity this evening, I'm just not feeling very good, and I don't have any report.
That's your hall. Supervisor Cup.
No report.
Vice Chair Demonts.
Very quickly, um, and I see that Ms. Templeton has left, um, Jennifer, I don't know, would it be you that coordinates with the pedal post?
We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, um, I am happy to receive letters, I'll also ride, um, so if, if that's necessary, I'd be happy to ride a bike up and down the Huckleberry, could count as my workout for that day. Um, two other quick things, uh, the final, uh, Mount Taber Ruotean Club biscuit breakfast will be held on April 13th, and that's not final, like permanently final, that'll be final for this season, because we move into our fish fries for May.
That's like this Saturday, right?
That's this Saturday, is it this Saturday? Yes, this Saturday, this Saturday, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Slushers Chapel Church of God on Mount Taber Road, uh, that's a fundraiser for the Ruotean Club, and as I've said many times, every dollar that we raise goes right back out into, um, nonprofits in the community, so it's a really good way to spend a few bucks, have homemade sausage and gravy biscuits, and, um, do a little bit of good in, in your part of the world. And then finally, um, I think you'll only have to listen to this tonight and one other time, Broomin and Bloomin is April 27th, um, and then there's a volunteer appreciation event that will be held at Mid County Park after Broomin and Bloomin, um, so again, that's Saturday, April 27th, the county is currently accepting volunteers, so if you would like to sign up, please get in touch. That's it.
No report. Meeting adjourned.